Excuse me, as a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos, I am the Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Larry Murphy?
Yeah, present.
Thank you, sir. George Morse?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Leslie Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Woody Knight?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Mary Stone?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor?
Yep.
Thank you. Emily Noble?
Yeah.
Thank you. Town Council, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Brian Winter?
I'm Winter's present.
Thank you. Anticipated speakers and presenters on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Mark DePiero?
He is here, he's just not in his window right now.
Okay. Steve Sawyer?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Steve. Jill Mann?
Not yet.
Okay. Chris York?
Not yet.
Okay. Kevin Whitney?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Hi, Kevin. TJ Melvin?
Not yet.
Okay, um, so, good evening. This is May 19th, 2021, open meeting. Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely considering Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the Governor's orders supersede the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to promote, to participate remotely. The order which can be found posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID 83271413056 or by calling 1-929-2056099 and entering the meeting ID when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees and participate are participating by video and/or telephone conference. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention before you have been called. So before we turn to the first item on the agenda, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate minutes. I, as the Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members inviting each by name to provide any common questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer with the mute button or on your phone with the star six to toggle to mute and unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members want to engage in discussions with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. With regards to public comment, there'll be an opportunity for public comment and questions during the public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions or comments through the Zoom raise hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover on the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery, click on the yellow hand that appears. If you don't see a yellow hand, click on the participants button. A list of participants will open and display on the right. At the bottom of the participant area, you'll be able to see an option to click to raise your hand. Please ensure that your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more functions next to your name. For telephone participants, to raise your hand at the Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order which they have listed, which is determined by the order in which the people click the raise hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your question. I will then continue down the list of the raised hand column and afford the participant applicant representatives an opportunity to speak. Should there be any physical electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant applicant representative will afford, be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not been addressed. Each, uh, just to reinforce this, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call load. Um, okay, we do have a couple of public hearings this evening, I believe, three hearings. So we're going to, again, try to limit our three hearings to 30 to 45 minute discussion time, if possible, just out of courtesy to the applicants and the other speakers on the agenda and members of the public in attendance. And I think that's what we have for now and looking at the agenda, Martha, I don't see any submissions or appearances, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, um, do we want to talk about a new business of the 66 Parish Road, OSRD Georgetown, the status report?
Um, sure, yeah, I think we have enough time to do that. So I mentioned last time in the planners, my planning directors report that the 66 Parish Road subdivision, it's a 10, 10, basically a 10 lot or 10 dwelling OSRD condominium. Accessed off of Larkin Road is now scheduled to start. John Colin Tony, who you will remember from the 108 Main Street project, has purchased that property. It's been languishing for some while. I think the, uh, the permitting process on that started back in the 90s. So there was a pre-construction meeting on May 6th, which I attended and Leslie was actually there as well. And, um, I've gotten a number of emails from residents raising some questions about it, which are going to have to be addressed. And again, this isn't anything for board action right now, but it seemed appropriate to kind of discuss it as, as an agenda item in case something does come back to the board. Some of the issues include the fact that the water main from, by, uh, from Georgetown is actually serving the site down Larkin Road, which paved a year ago. So there is going to, you know, have to be some consideration of that since there's a five year moratorium on street openings after, after, after they're paved. There was an agreement reached with the Select Board back in 2016 to rebuild the culvert there that was compromised during the Mother's Day storm and then sometime after that, probably 2014, 2015, became completely dysfunctional, pretty much collapsed. So there are also some, uh, that's gone through Conservation Commission. They did receive an extension till 2022 for that construction, but there are also some questions about that. So, long story short, there are a number of things that have come up, which I'm following up on with the appropriate people here and will hope to get some, some answers on, on that.
Okay.
So.
There's something, Martha?
I'm sorry?
May I ask you, what, was there any discussion about the Planning Board in Newbury or Newbury's commissions and boards being involved in this whole process or is it primarily Georgetown still?
Well, it's, um, I mean, that's a good question. I had, when this was going through the most recent permitting process, I had reached out to Town Council to see whether, whether there was any need for them to submit an application, subdivision application to the town. And at that time, and the property is entirely in Georgetown.
Okay.
So there are no, no new lots, no road being created. Great. So, so there was no need for a subdivision application to come to the town. It did go through our Conservation Commission for the, uh, the bridge. No intent. But there are other, you know, other questions which involve our DPW and, and there's things that need to be followed up on. I don't think that there will be any action needed by the board again, but partly I wanted to fill you in because there are people who are interested in it and you may be getting questions as well.
Right, I mean, this is not of interest as I walk down there every day pretty much.
Right.
Talking, we're starting to talk. Interesting.
So, um, I've been told by the Georgetown planner that construction may start as soon as next week or the week after. They are planning to use Larkin Road exclusively for access to the site during construction, even after the bridges is rebuilt, which is going to be in the middle of the summer according to the current schedule. And yeah, I think those are, those are the major, major things right now.
Moving on.
All right, well, thank you for that update. Uh, we have a couple, three, four minutes. Do, do we have anything on the Planning Director's Report that we want to touch on?
I don't think so right now. As you all know, Governor Baker is easing, easing restrictions and I think we'll be getting some guidance next week on what that means for us in terms of our reopening and protocols and things like that. So I will be able to give a fuller report after, after we learn that.
Okay, very good. Um, all right, we have three minutes. Let's just hop on liaison reports. Leslie, do you want to do a quick, uh, quick Select Board report?
Sure. The Select Board had a meeting, the Thursday after town meeting. Basically, all it was about was old point for their full, for the full liquor license. No meeting last week because of the election.
Great, that's easy. Um, Larry, anything with ZBA?
Um, their regular monthly meeting is tomorrow night. There are actually five special permit, uh, public hearings on the agenda. All five, um, for, uh, special permits to modify uh, single family homes and on, within the Plum Island overlay district. I don't think there's anything that's likely to find its way to the Planning Board. And I think that's about it.
Okay. Anything from MB, MBPC?
Uh, there's a commissioners meeting tomorrow. It's anticipated that uh, the commission will be voting on a new executive director. So, um, hopefully that, that will move forward and, and I think that's probably the biggest item on the agenda for tomorrow.
Are you part of that search committee again this time?
Um, I was not. I did attend the, um, the interviews with the three finalists. But it was just not, not possible for me to be on the search committee this time. Too much going on.
Only so much room on the plate. Edible. Um, and I'll just do a quick update on CONCOM. 15 Coleman was presented as well following our meeting the night before. Um, and there don't, don't appear to be any significant hiccups along that, that aspect. It was another grueling meeting. I think it was four hours and 10 minutes long. So it's, it's unfortunate in that I think the, uh, the glaze factor kicks in after three hours. Um, and I am hopeful that when the commission does return to in-person meetings, uh, that they can be tailored, uh, with, uh, with consideration for time. That's my biggest concern. Uh, it's very fatiguing, especially when we have back-to-back meetings. Uh, and we're looking for an agent, um, the, our agent has moved on to another job opportunity. Uh, so there's a search going on. Uh, so we're kind of without an agent for a little bit. So it'd be a little bit uh, of, uh, many hands pulling, pulling the boat to get that process going. So that's about what I have on that. Um, that's great. I love the reports. We're done in five minutes. Okay, I think we're coming up on 7:15, which is perfect timing. Uh, and we can start our public hearings. Our first public hearing is a public hearing continuance of open space residential development, special permit application of 105 Higher Road map R48. Lot 49 applicant is DePiero LLC owner is Mitchell Manten, formerly author in Sandra Costanzas, continued from April 21, uh, of 20. Okay, just a couple, um, things to start off this, uh, continued public hearing. I need to indicate that I watched the video of April 12, uh, April 21, 21, uh, the public, uh, the session of the public hearing and provided the required certificate to the Planning Director. The Vice Chair and I had an opportunity to have a conversation yesterday and I think that we're going to structure tonight's meeting a little, uh, in a different manner just to help, uh, to advance this process. Martha, yes?
Um, we do have the request from Attorney Man.
Okay.
To, so I, I think we probably need to deal with that first to see whether.
Okay, so, um, she's requested the special permit hearing be moved on the agenda from first to second due to a conflict that she has with them. Oh, I just saw her in the audience. I thought that she was here, uh, with a meeting in Washington. Okay, let me ask board members if they have any concerning doing that and if we have, uh, people who would be next in line, if that's the case, first, uh, board members. We were asked first to put this item on the agenda first. Um, now we're being asked to put this item, uh, agenda on the second. Let me ask, uh, see if there's any questions or concerns with board members. Oh, Larry, any concerns with that?
No.
Okay, thank you. George, any concerns with that? Uh, thank you. Leslie, any concerns with that?
No.
Uh, thank you. Woody, any concerns with that?
None.
Thank you. Uh, Mary, any concerns with that? Okay, beautiful. Um, if that being the case, uh, that would mean that we would, uh, would we go to 84 Boston Road? Let me see.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Jill. Uh, Kevin, do you have your team here? Do you have everything that you need, Kevin Whitney? Uh, this is the problem with moving, moving the agenda around.
I'm here. I think Kevin's here too.
Okay, beautiful, beautiful. Um, Chris, uh, would you be, uh, uh, you said if we, uh, continue with the public hearing?
I'm ready, sure.
Okay, then that being the case, uh, let me go over to that item, which is going to be, uh, 84, uh, Site Plan Review, applicant for 84 Boston Road, uh, map R36 lot 23A, applicant K and R Construction Company owner, Sled Road LLC, Kevin Whitney and Ryan Greenwich, managers continued from April 21, 21. Again, for the record, I just need to indicate that I did watch the video for April 21, 2021, session of the public hearing, provided the required, uh, certificate, uh, certification to the Planning Director. So, Chris or Kevin, do you have anything new for the, uh, any new materials to present to the board?
I'll let Chris lead on this.
Okay, Chris?
No, we don't have any new materials. We just started reading Martha's second draft decision letter a few minutes ago. That's all we got.
Okay, so no, no, no new materials or information for the board. Um, I'm gonna ask the board members if they have any questions as to where we're at right now. Uh, Larry, sir, any questions?
No.
Okay, George, sir, any questions?
No.
Okay, Leslie, any questions?
No.
Great. Uh, any questions?
No.
Uh, great. Uh, and, uh, Mary, any questions? Okay, beautiful. Uh, are there any public attendees that have any questions regarding this applicant 84 Boston Road, uh, the Site Plan Review? Now would be a time that we could hear questions or concerns. Okay, don't see any, okay. So, uh, I just want to indicate that we have not received any, uh, new written, uh, comments and we have no names to read. Okay. To, so, so I think probably Martha, we should, uh, review our revised draft site plan decision. And to see if we have anything, um, that we need to discuss until we probably pop that up on the screen. And Larry, with your help, we'll probably go through this as we have in the past.
Okay.
You're with me for a second.
Take your time.
A few, a few more things open here than I thought I did.
I understand.
All right, are you able to see that?
Yes, um, can we make it to the top bit larger?
Yes, we can.
Beautiful. Get the door?
How's that?
Good, thank you. Um, and so what we'll need, uh, to do is, oops, flipped over my page here, is to go, go through section by section, uh, again, I have the door. With regards to the findings and conditions, I believe.
Yes, and there were a few things that we did receive an updated narrative from Chris, uh, last week, which was forwarded on to the board. Along with an email from, uh, Kevin Whitney regarding hours of operation. So if I may, I kind of highlight a couple of those things under the project description.
Okay.
The narrative was revised to indicate that it is 6,500 square foot building instead of the original 7,500 or 74.
Okay.
I did note here that the retaining wall will be up to 10 feet high, which goes shown on the drawings. The narrative was updated to indicate that the vehicle, vehicular traffic through the site will be one way with the vehicles entering on the sort of the northeasterly part of the site via, it's more in the center, but via paved 24 foot wide driveway and then exiting via a 20 foot. And Chris, that's a question for you in terms of clarification.
Yep, 20 feet.
Okay, that's what I thought. Wide driveway along the southeasterly border of the property. The next, uh, paragraph really gets into the hours of operation and modifications to the language regarding that. The original application said that regular business hours would be from seven to five, Monday through Friday, with occasional Saturday hours. The request, um, Kevin Whitney requested last time that the board consider proposed hours of operation for the entire facility from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, with some occasional off-hour work for emergency utility work. This was discussed at one point during the public hearings, but had never really been, um, you know, kind of fully, uh, fully agreed to. So that has been modified here as the applicant's request.
So the board, the board hasn't had an opportunity to discuss that then?
No.
Okay. Um, would this be an opportunity for the board to discuss that now, since we're here at this point of this? So we're going from Monday through Friday to Monday through, Monday through Saturday and seven, instead of seven to five, we're going six to six. So the proposed hours of operation for the entire facility are from, this is what the proposal is, from six to six, Monday through Saturday, to allow employees to access the site before and after business hours in order to load and unload construction vehicles for the day's work. Per the applicant, Saturday hours are needed in case of loss of days during the week due to weather or busy times when crews are six days a, a week. The applicant is also requesting approval of limited work hours for, to perform emergency utility work for various local municipalities. Okay, um, so let's just, uh, talk about that for a sec. Uh, and I want to run through the board members, uh, to see if there's any concerns. Keeping in mind that transfer station is open Monday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. Saturday is a very busy day down there because a lot of people that work, that's the only time they get to the transfer station is on Saturday. So traffic through that area, I think is going to be busier on Saturday than probably any other day. That's just kind of a, a thing from living in town that I would, uh, so I might have a little bit of concerns with Saturday because of that. And, uh, yeah, so I'll start with Larry. Larry, thoughts on extending the hours, um, to Saturday and the?
I'm sorry, I, you know, the, I think the transfer station closes at three, doesn't it?
Yes, 7:30 to 3:30.
I mean, I, I, I think some Saturday hours are reasonable. And you've only got about, uh, I mean, I think the original request was till noon, is that correct?
Um, actually, the original request, there were no hours on Saturday.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, to cut to, to the chase, I have no problem with it, with the requested hours. I mean, there will be some overlap, obviously, with the transfer station, but, uh, you know, they have a business to run. I think it's reasonable.
Okay, uh, thank you, Larry. Uh, George, uh, any thoughts on, on the modification?
I'm just looking at the office hours being from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then two sentences down, the proposed hours of operation for the entire facility. There's a little conflict, I think it ought to say they're exclusive of the office. Right after the word facility, what? Proposed hours of operation for the entire facility exclusive of the office.
Okay, so basically you don't want office work going on. Right, you just want the equipment coming in and out as it, as has been described.
Right.
Okay. Arthur, can you?
May I just comment?
Uh, hold on, Kevin. Yeah, hold on. I, I, I really want to get the board to weigh in on this because it's the first time they're seeing this and then we'll, we'll have you make your comments. Thank you.
So, may I clarify, just George, do you mean by that, that in the six to six, what they're looking for is one hour earlier and one hour later for, um, the non-office workers for their crews to come in and load and unload and?
Well, the, the entire facility is, word entire is the product for me. See, the office is separate by time and yet the office is enclosed within the entire facility. So it seems to be a built-in conflict between times. Uh, I'm just trying to set the two apart by taking the office out of the description of the entire facility. Am I losing everybody?
No, no, I got you. I got you, George.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, uh, any other comments, uh, George, about the request? Okay, um, continuing, uh, with board members' insight and opinion, Leslie, your thoughts?
Um, I'm not, I'm not quite sure I, um, agree with George on this because I, I think that at the end of the day, when the, uh, the people that go out on the road return, are they responsible to turn in some paperwork to the office for work done or any other information on the particular job, it's job site that they have been working on that day?
I, I don't know. Um, and I don't know, I don't know if we want to get involved in the, you know, the management.
So that, you know, if you did, they're returning at six o'clock and the office is closed at five. I, I wasn't sure if they had, uh, any responsibility to, um, have communication with the office.
Okay. I, I can help clarify.
Kevin, go ahead.
Okay, so my goal is, previously I said the seven, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM and that is the typical hours that office staff will be in the office working. Then I realized, oh no, what if we need to pick up a dump truck or a trailer to go to a job site that's say, an hour away? I didn't want to be outside of my rights to start that truck at say, 6:30 to drive it off the site. That's the only reason I wanted the change in the timing. Um, and like, like Leslie was just asking, yes, at the end of the day, the truck driver will need to open the building to put his keys on the hook inside and drop off any slips, um, um, for work that was done that day. But they won't be office staff, they had to process it, but it would just go in like a, 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 a box or something or a folder, you know, of some sort. That's basically, I just wanted the extra time at the beginning and end of the day, just for trucks to be picked up and then dropped off. And then as far as the Saturdays go with the dump, I mean, that was mainly, say, I wanted to go. And then as far as the Saturdays go with the dump, I mean, that was mainly say, I wanted to go and wash my truck or if I had a little bit of office work, I wanted to catch up on personally. I didn't want to be outside my rights and have someone calling and complaining that we're on the property, you know? But the intentions are there won't be a lot of work going on and traffic coming and going on Saturdays.
Okay, so the only comment I'll make is once we do this, it's, it's done. And if you sell the business, it goes to somebody else, you might have an understanding. And if it, if the rights transferred to someone else and they have a different perspective and they want to do more than wash their trucks or do something like that, then we're dealt with that sequelae. So whenever we look at a project, Kevin, we always have to look at how it can migrate in the future. And that's why the things like this are put into the, into the formula. So do you want to un, un, unclutter the formula or do we want to clutter the formula with, with Saturday?
I really need to be allowed access to the property on Saturdays.
I don't think anybody's ever going to stop you from getting access to your work. Martha, would that be the case? It's, it's actually doing business. That's the concern, right, Martha?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think the concern would be if you were, you know, had trucks going in and out all day on a, on a Saturday.
Well, I, I may, I may need to do a Saturday job. It does, it does, it does happen time to time. It's not a regular basis.
Okay.
But it's
This is no, this was known beforehand. We're just picking it up now.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Leslie, any other thoughts?
No, that's all.
Cool. Woody, any thoughts, sir?
No, they've anything, they've all been covered already. Okay, I think the hours are reasonable.
Okay, beautiful. Mary?
Six to six, the entire facility makes, it's clear to me. The details seem to be irrelevant, quite frankly.
Okay. My, 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 through Saturday. Okay, let's go back and visit George's concept of the entire facility exclusive of the office. Do we want to have that language or do we want to exclude that language? Larry?
I, I would take it out. I mean, I don't see any reason to distinguish between a truck driver and a secretary who might want to stay next to 15 minutes to finish the payroll, you know?
Okay.
Six to six Monday through Saturday for the entire facility.
Okay.
Fine with that.
Okay, beautiful. George?
Yes. Now it's fine to take it out as long as people understand that there are different hours. Drivers have to get in to drop off keys and any paperwork. After five o'clock, at least they would have access with a place to drop off the keys and the paperwork.
Okay.
But you don't want to create a situation where all of us have office hours on a general basis, right?
Yeah.
Little artful, more artful construction would make it work better, but it's fine. I just take it. And I think people will operate in good faith.
I understand where you're coming from. Thank you very much, George. Leslie, I'm removing the, the language about the exclusive of the office.
I don't see the, the problem with the, the language.
Being removed or being, or leaving it. The, the exclusive of the office piece, which George added into the equation. George is willing to take that out. Are you willing to have it removed as well?
No, it can be removed.
Okay, beautiful. Woody?
Yeah, take, take it out. Things happen six to six.
Okay, cool. I'm Mary.
Six to six, I'm with Larry.
Okay, perfect. Okay, great.
Yeah, that's a good question. Would it just be simpler to, to take out the language about the office and just say hours of operation will be six to six?
So that's cleaner. Yes.
Strike, strike all of that.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Thank you very much. And propose I was operation. Take operation, good. Perfect. Excellent. Let's see, per the applicant Saturday hours are needed in case of, but if we get that, the applicant is also requesting approval, okay. So I'll let you continue with any modifications going forward here. All right.
Yep, so. So that was, that was it. Modify the date since it was continued to today. Filled in Kevin's name as the manager of Sled Road LLC. And then yes, the question came up. The, you know, the bylaw says that the, the planning board may require traffic impact assessment, environmental impact assessment, community impact assessment. None of those were, were requested and the board typically says, requests a waiver from these if they're not going to be provided, but no waiver has been requested, so. I just, I'm flagging that to see how the board feels about that.
So we, we haven't had any waiver request. That's what I'm understanding, Martha?
Right, there's been no waiver request, but this information was also not provided.
Okay. That's a little bit of a hiccup. Let's see, Larry, your thoughts?
Well, I, I guess that the application should be, should be amended to include those waiver requests.
Is the best way to remediate that, that requirement?
I don't know what else you do with it.
Okay. George?
Again, I'm looking at it if it's required by the bylaw, then you'd have to modify the application some type.
Actually, it's not required. The bylaw says yeah, the board may require.
Yeah, then. We either say they just delete those, I guess. It'll be the best way to do it.
Let me go back to Larry. So the concept is may require Larry as opposed to have to require thoughts?
Then maybe it's not properly categorized as a waiver then, Martha, what do you think?
It's typically been treated that way. Whether it's appropriate or not, that's how the board has done it.
Yeah, I mean, I'll say this, given the scope of this project, I think the waivers would be appropriate. Maybe just to take about and suspenders approach, we ought to ask the applicant to submit a letter requesting waivers of those items. I don't think it needs to be anything more, more detailed than that, frankly.
From administrative standpoint, Martha, does that, would that fit the bill?
I think so.
Okay, George, so we now have the concept of having a letter to, from the applicant to request a waiver. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. Leslie, I think we have a solution. You comfortable with that, that suggestion?
Yes.
Okay. Woody?
Yes, that's a good solution.
Okay, Mary?
Makes sense.
Okay, so I guess Martha will have to ask the applicant to be certain to have a letter to request modification, a waiver to a letter to request modification to or waiver. I'm trying to tumble through the words here.
A letter requesting waivers from.
Okay, B, C, and D.
B, C, and D.
Okay, cool. All right.
May I ask a quick question?
Go ahead, Chris.
This won't push us back two more weeks. Well, can I?
No, I think you can just, you can just put it in the form of a letter and Martha think that is acceptable, correct, Martha?
Yes, so then the board would need just, would just need to go through all, all four of these and, and determine whether these waivers are acceptable or not.
Okay, so we should
of getting that letter for B, C, and D.
Okay, so are we comfortable with a waiver or requirement for, for B? I guess that's the first question. We should ask them. All right, Larry?
Yeah, do we not also need to consider A too?
We do.
Okay.
You want to, you want us? You still want to go with B?
Let's
We can always come back to A.
Let's, let's start at the top of the list. Why don't you drive for a couple of minutes, Larry? Go ahead.
All right, waiver request A, waiver was requested section A for B eight, which requires that the plan identify all trees over eight inches in caliper due to the fact that the site is entirely wooded. The applicant instead shows general tree lines. You want to take a vote on these now, Pete? Did I lose them?
I think you may have.
All right, let, let me, let me suggest this pending getting the chairman back with us. If anyone wants to put a hold on any of these waivers for discussion, please just indicate that. So any hold on waiver A? All right, B, traffic impact assessment, a waiver from this requirement was requested due to the fact that so that I guess we'll need to look for that in the, in the letter.
If you want, I can.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you, why don't you state that, Chris?
I can verbally describe it. I don't have that in front of me, but you know, where I can send the, as we said all along, we got about two office employees in there during the day, you know, the amount of traffic is going to be minimal. Handful of trap, handful of trips in and out every day, you know, with the trucks coming in at night and in the morning, I think it's a minimal, minimal amount of traffic coming into the sites, I think. Traffic impact, not, there's no impact of all the traffic.
All right, thank you. So do we have, Martha, do you have enough information to fill in the blanks there?
I do.
Okay, so do we have any hold on item B? Hearing none will move on. Environmental impact assessment, a waiver from this requirement was requested due to the fact that, Chris?
That is, I believe, involved groundwater, the issues of groundwater, treatment of groundwater where any stormwater is being treated in the constructed wetlands. I believe noise is a, one of the impacts listed, there's no issues with noise. No light impact. We just have the wall mounted lights on the buildings for the lighting on site is minimal. No, no spill over onto the neighboring properties or into the wetlands. And I think that's what I recall. That is all I can remember on the environmental impacts.
Any hold on this item C?
Well, one concern, if I could, Larry, so Martha, we can, do we have a night, dark night skylights conforming for this project? Because I know that that's a concern now that we're going to be removing all these trees.
Yes.
And so they're all compliant.
Right, Chris, do you want to confirm that? But
Yes, yes, they are. They are, I guess we have six, one, two, three, six wall mounted lights. They are all down facing in dark sky.
Okay. Okay, that being the case, I would be comfortable. Thanks, thanks, Larry.
All right, indeed. Community impact assessment, a waiver from this requirement was requested due to the fact that
We are not using any town infrastructure, utility infrastructure on the site. There's no connections to town water or town store. We'll be privately, privately owned water and wells and subject system.
Okay. Any further discussion on any of these waivers?
No.
No, hearing none. Are you prepared to take a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
All right, I move to, to approve the requested waivers as stated.
Second.
Very good. There's a motion and a second. On the motion, any discussion, Larry?
No.
Any discussion, George?
No.
Any discussion on the motion, Leslie?
No.
Any discussion on the motion, Woody? Any discussion on the motion, Mary? Okay, on the motion stuff, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you, George. How do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie. How do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody. How do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary. How do you feel? Thank you, and charity also supports. Thank you. Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Larry. Do you want to? Let's continue along, Larry. I like this tag team.
All right, do you want me to, you want to do the same thing? Just want me to just read them and ask for any holds or do you want to take them each separately and discuss them?
I would, you know, we could probably do it by page to see if there's any concerns with, with, you know, page five or page six or page seven.
Okay, again, I'm not clear, Pete, if you want me to read all these.
I don't think you need to read them all.
Okay, all right, well.
We should probably just on the findings, we just want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with the findings and maybe discuss on the conditions.
Okay. Well, as to the findings, they begin on page five of nine and go through page six of nine, items A through M. I have no issues with any of them. Is any discussion on any of these conditions? The findings, excuse me.
Well.
So.
Go ahead.
Nope.
Do you want to move on to the conditions of approval?
Yes, and I think we should go through those individually.
All right, you want me to just read them off?
Yes.
Okay, so conditions of approval, according to section 97 dash nine A five, site plan review approval is granted subject to the following conditions. A, site plan approval by the planning board shall not be construed as approval from any other board, commission, official, or department. The applicant is responsible for obtaining all required approvals and permits for the proposed project. Any discussion? All right, hearing none B. Approval is contingent on final approval by all other relevant boards, commissions, and agencies of the town. Any approval which imposes conditions inconsistent with the site plan approval shall require a revision of the site plan. A request to such revision must be submitted in writing to the planning board. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, then C. A pre-construction meeting with the planning director, the planning board's engineering consultant. The conservation aid, conservation agent and other representatives of the town shall be held prior to the commencement of site work. The limit of work and the limit of tree clearing shall be clearly identified prior to the pre-construction conference. Any work beyond these limits without prior approval show because for immediate enforcement action. Again, any discussion?
I have a question for clarification.
Okay.
Since we are without a conservation agent, how is that going to work?
Martha, who's fulfilling the duties of the conservation agent?
I think right now the, the conservation commission chair and vice chair are filling in where they can as needed. Bill also is coming in on Fridays and helping out a little bit. And we also don't know exactly when Kevin is starting, you know, planning to start construction, so we may have somebody in place by then.
Okay, do you think we need any further clarification on this language?
I think also, just to add one thing, Joe Sirwodka has also said that, and he would be there anyway, but he, he can also kind of help fill the role that the conservation agent would temporarily.
Okay, does that answer your concerns, Leslie?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to D. A detailed construction schedule shall be provided to the planning director at or before the pre-construction conference and the planning director shall be notified of any changes to the schedule as site work and construction proceed. Any discussion? A, moving on, E, the planning board reserves the right for itself and its agents to enter the site at any time for the duration of the site plan approval to determine compliance therewith. Any discussion? F, construction inspection shall be carried out by an agent designated by the planning board and the cost of all such inspections shall be borne by the applicant. If said inspections find that work is not being done in conformance with the approved plans, the board may suspend the site plan review approval until the work in question is repaired or may take any other action the board deems appropriate to encourage compliance with the approved plans in all respects and to enforce compliance if necessary, all in the sole discretion of the planning board. Any discussion? G, construction activity shall be limited to the hours between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM inclusive Monday through Friday. And if weekend hours are needed between 8:00 AM and 2:00 PM inclusive on Saturday, there should be no construction activity on Sundays. Any discussion?
So I think Martha, we're probably going to need to adjust this.
Well, that's, that's not the hours of operation. That's
The construction.
Right.
Okay.
We good?
Yep.
Okay. H, blasting shall be done in accordance with five twenty-seven CMR one point zero zero in all other relevant federal, state, and local regulations. No blasting shall occur until and unless the Newbury Fire Department has issued a permit to blast. A copy of the permit to blast should be provided to the planning director. Any discussion? I, exterior lighting shall be limited to building mounted wall packs shielded and designed to direct light downward and to prevent spill over of light off the project site. There shall be no pole mounted light fixtures. The color temperature of the light bulbs shall be no higher than three thousand K. Any discussion? J, a tree buffer at least ten feet deep consisting of native species compatible with the existing woodland trees shall be planted along the south, the northwesterly property boundary to replace trees that were removed for the temporary construction access road between Boston Road and the Newbury South Storage Site. Again, any discussion?
Point of information, Martha, who will be determining the tree buffer density? How will that be addressed?
Good question.
Are we wanting, do we want to have a plan designed for that? As we have had with other projects where it actually describes and demonstrates where these trees will be planted?
I think that would probably be helpful, where they would be planted and what the species were, our size, that kind of thing.
Okay, let's see how the board feels about that. We've done that with other projects. Larry?
Yeah, that certainly seems appropriate.
Okay, George?
That would be consistent with my thinking, yes.
Wonderful, Leslie?
Yes.
Okay, Woody?
Yes, that's good.
Okay, Mary?
Sounds good.
Okay, so Martha, how are we going to address the language on J two facility?
So it would be language essentially landscape. Size, density, and species. Trees. Will be provided to the board or to, to me for approval?
Yes, I think to be granted to you for approval.
How does that sound?
Is that good?
Larry, comfortable with that language?
Yeah, I think so.
Probably more spacing rather than density.
Okay, George?
Yes.
Okay, Woody?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Mary? Mary?
Mary, you're muted, Mary.
I'm sorry, the dog was barking. Yes, yes, it's per.
Okay, thank you, okay.
So just one, one question, since this may well be in the buffer zone, there may need to be input from the Conservation Commission on that as well, in terms of.
Okay, do you feel comfortable directing that vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I don't want this to hang up the process, if it can be done within departments.
May I just comment, small, short comment? I, I believe our plan already shows us doing tree plantings along Boston Road. And my understanding is these tree plantings that you're requesting, they're going to be basically bordering sled road? Is that correct?
No, bordering Newbury Self Storage.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, because I was going to say I'd probably do the same kind of trees that we already had on the plan, that's what I was thinking.
So, yep, so we want to try to create a buffer that was there before to try to recreate that, so I think having a plan and then working with Martha to facilitate that Martha, if anything, looks like it's going to come close to conservation, then we'll have to work with the agent at that time to make sure that that doesn't create an issue.
Right, right, I mean, it could be a simple request for determination or something like that, but yeah.
It should be outside the hundred foot buffer, just because we, when Kevin created that road accessible, we did deal with Concon just to make sure we stake out the hundred foot buffer line to make sure this rope was in the outside of the buffers, but
Right.
We also prepared, we also prepared a plan for Concon that chose a buffer behind the wall with about thirty shrub or thirty trees, we can use similar types of trees. I think in the, the northwest corner here that we're talking about.
Okay, so I think that's something you can work with Martha on, Chris, perfect. Good, all right, continue, Larry, thanks.
All right, item K, to mitigate the impact of the extensive tree removal necessitated by the proposed use on the site, the applicant shall provide the town with a contribution to the town's tree fund in the amount of one thousand dollars. Any discussion? L, hours of operation of the facility shall be limited to the hours between seven AM and six PM inclusive Monday through Saturday. Limited occasional off hour operation may be allowed when the applicant is called on to do emergency utility work for local municipalities.
Yeah, I had already changed that on this copy anyway, from six AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday.
Right, now that's consistent with what we talked about earlier.
Right, right.
Okay, shall we move on? Item M, no site construction materials such as gravel, sand, loam, or stone shall be stone stored on site. On-site storage of hard materials such as pipes, castings, and fittings will be allowed only to the only in the area designated on the plan. Any discussion? Okay, item N, at the discretion of the building commissioner with the concurrence of the planning board, recording of a certificate of the town clerk and the decision of site plan review at the Southern Essex Registry, and shall be included as an additional condition precedent to the issuance of any building permit. Any discussion?
This actually says may, would, would you like that to be changed to shall?
I have no, I have no problem with it personally. I have no problem with the suggested change, I mean.
Change it to shall.
Well, let me ask you this, Martha, is it the common practice to record these things? I think it is, isn't it?
Uh, I think generally.
I mean, it, it's a good idea to record them because it puts any subsequent purchaser of the property on notice.
Right, so perhaps it should become become a requirement rather than at the discretion.
I think that makes sense.
That's cleaner, no, don't need to worry about it. It's, it's an easy thing to do.
Right, okay, so if it's okay, I'll fine tune this language, but I'll change it to say that the certification on site plan review decision shall be recorded.
I'm fine with that, any further discussion? Okay, I think we can probably move on to item O. No modifications to the approved site plan shall be made without prior approval of the planning board. Requests for modification shall be submitted to the board in writing and shall in most cases be subject to the same submittal review and hearing procedures as was the original filing. Any discussion? P, duration of approval, site plan approval for the project shall lapse after two years from the date of issuance, not including time required to pursue or await determination of an appeal referred to in general laws, chapter forty-eight, sections eight and seventeen, unless approved construction work shall have commenced and proceeded in good faith continuously to completion, except for good cause. In such case, a request for extension of the date of completion shall be submitted in writing to the planning board. Any discussion? And that concludes it, the conditions.
Great, thank you very much, Larry, appreciate. Okay, any other additional comments or concerns from board members, Larry?
No.
Okay, George?
No.
Great, Woody? Leslie?
Oh.
Mary?
No.
Okay, any concerns or additional comments from the applicant? Kevin or Chris?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm good.
Okay, great, that being the case, Martha, do we have any other, other outstanding concerns with this?
Hmm, no.
Okay, great, that being the case, I would entertain a motion to grant a site plan approval. And the decision as amended?
Uh, so.
Thank you, there's a motion, is there a second?
I can, I can.
Thank you, Woody, for the second, on the motion, any discussion, discussion, Larry?
No.
Discussion, George?
No.
Discussion, Leslie?
No.
Discussion, Woody?
No.
Discussion, Mary?
No.
Okay, on the motion, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you, George?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie? Leslie? Yes, okay, wonderful, Woody?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary, how do you feel?
Yes, yes.
Wonderful, and the chair is also in support, that being the case, I would ask for a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
It has been moved, George, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Very good, any discussion on the motion, discussion, Larry?
No.
Discussion, George?
No.
Discussion, Leslie?
Oh.
Discussion, Woody?
No.
Discussion, Mary? Wonderful, and how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you, George?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody?
Yes.
Thank you, and Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
And the board is also in favor, okay, any other information or discussion components, Martha?
Uh, no.
I'm so used to this, this feel at the end of the conservation, where there's a certain amount of appeal reported, we don't have to do that, that's wonderful. It's there. Okay, um very good, Kevin, you're all set, Chris, you're all set.
Thank you.
Good, thanks for your patience through this process. Okay, now if I understand correctly, Martha will be going back to one oh five High Road?
That's correct.
Okay, let me flip my pages around here. Okay, we will now be returning back to continuation of a public hearing, open space residential development, OSRD, special permit application, one oh five Higher Road, R forty-eight, lot forty-nine, Advocate DePiero LLC owner, Mitch Manten, formerly author, and Sandra Costanzas continued from April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. And I will indicate again that I watched the video from April twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. The session of the public hearing provided the requested certification to the planning director. Okay, so I think I started to say this, and I'm going to kind of lay the format for this, this evening with this. We really need to advance this process. In doing so, I think it's very important that we begin tonight's session by reviewing the project with regards to our OSD decision and criteria as well as the requirements. And I think if the board's in agreement, I would like to proceed along that course, and as you hold on to that thought for a moment, I do want to also indicate that board members, this is for public, for public individuals that might be listening, that public, that public comment and materials are dispersed to board members. Emails are read and understood, so any materials that have been submitted to the planning department have been circulated to the board members, and it's their responsibility and their duty, and they do read all email and the public comments. So that's very important to make sure that that's the case. The second thing that I want to do is, I think I want supplement in, in support, Larry, your comment of the last meeting, which was the role of this, of this board is not to determine if a development is or is not going to happen at this, at this location. The site will be developed. What it, where it comes into our purview is when it has to be considered with regards to our rules and our bylaws. And so Larry, do you want to supplement that at all?
Well, just, you know, to pick up on something you said earlier, Pete, and I think I can speak, I'm certainly speaking for myself, but I think to the other board members as well, that we take all of these comments very seriously. And we've had an inordinate amount of interest in this property in this development, much of it opposed, some of it in favor. But we see a lot of calls for an outright ban on any sort of development on this property. And I think it's worth reiterating again, we just don't have that kind of authority. We can't tell Mr. Manten and Mr. DePiero that they don't have the right to develop this property, they do under the general laws, and that's the subdivision control law. And if, if they proceed with you know, an application under the subdivision control law, and they check all the boxes, you know, they're entitled to approval. And there is still such a thing as private property rights. With the OSRD, and this is where I think there's a lot of confusion.
The OSRD. Larry, Larry, I'm just going to interrupt you for a second, Brian, I just need clarification for a moment. There's a individual who's holding up a Stop DePiero condos sign. Is it appropriate for me to ask that individual to please try to remove that sign, or do I have the ability to turn off that video?
I think we can turn out that, turn off that video.
That's what I'm going to do.
And we could reactivate it, but I don't think it's appropriate for the public hearings.
Okay, I'm going to turn off the video of Molly just for clarification, thanks. Thank you, Brian, for helping with that. Go ahead, Larry.
Oh, and I'll try and be brief, I know, and we're covering, maybe you've been over this ground before, but I think it's worth reiterating. Look, the OSRD, or Open Space Residential Development, is an alternative to a definitive subdivision plan or a conventional subdivision plan under the subdivision control law. It's something that was adopted by the town at town meeting. So our friends and neighbors have, have voted this into law for this community. And many, many communities have have similar bylaws, and it's a very simple thing, the idea is that but it is a special permit, let me step back, so there's a lot more discretion in the board in granting this or denying it, for that matter. As are all forms of special permit, they're not as of right in comparison to say a conventional subdivision plan. But the whole idea is that, the purpose of it is to encourage the preservation of open space by confining construction to a reduced area of the parcel in exchange for keeping a large portion of the parcel forever available as open space, so that it can't be, it can't be developed and built on. And what this, these proceedings have always been about since the very beginning is to determine whether or not it's in the public interest, the best interest of the town to permit the OSRD in exchange for the preservation of open space or to leave the developer and the owner to their rights to proceed under the subdivision control law. But these proceedings have never been about if something can be built on the property, it's always been about what can be built on the property. And with the board, and frankly, I'm very, personally, very sympathetic to the position that many people have taken, that they'd like to see this property left in its current condition, I would too. But you know, that's not our job to tell them that they, they can't or cannot build on this property. So, you know.
Thanks, thank you, Larry, I appreciate that, Martha, I just want to clarify something. If, if I have this correctly, our master plan actually supports OSRD as part of its vision, is that correct?
It does, yes.
Okay, great, so we're following the direction of our master plan with this concept of OSRD. I just so that can be understood, I thank you for that help, the helpful information, Larry. I do want to indicate that we did receive a submission, was that yesterday, Martha?
No, it was actually last week on the twelfth.
Okay, and there was nothing of any significance from a previous submission, is that, is that correct?
It was refinement of what had been. It was refinement of what had been submitted previously. But you know, the the overall plan of 10 10 units, including the existing house and the amount of open space and everything is was the same as what had been submitted previously.
Okay. That being the case, I think it's probably appropriate to review the OSRD decision criteria. I just want to make sure board members are comfortable with that. Larry?
Yeah.
Okay, George?
Yes.
Okay, Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Uh, Mary? Okay, Martha, could we share that those components?
I certainly hope so. This is it? Yes.
And Larry, I think we'll kind of I'm going to kind of use your your beautiful legal ease here to help us with this process. Is that okay with you again?
Sure, whatever I can do, Pete.
Okay, so basically, this is the decision for the planning board with regards to decision criteria, and that's I have that correct heading. Is that correct, Martha?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, Larry?
All right, do you want to do the same thing we did before? Just ask for any holds, or do you want to stop for discussion on on each of these items?
I I just want to make sure that people are comfortable with each of the items as we go through.
Okay. So this is section 13 of our bylaw, and it it requires that the the board may grant a special permit for an OSRD if the board determines that the proposed OSRD has less detrimental impact on the tract than a conventional development. That's a conventional subdivision that we talked about earlier. Excuse me. Proposed for the tracks after considering the following factors. So these are factors that we must take into consideration. I'm not sure that they're that we can't think of take other factors into consideration as well. I'm speaking for myself, not for the board. But these are the factors we're required to look at. Number one, whether the OSRD achieves greater flexibility and creativity in the design of residential or unit developments than a conventional plan. Any discussion on that? Two, whether the OSRD promotes permanent preservation of open space, agricultural land, forestry land, other natural resources, including water bodies and wetlands, and historical and archaeological resources. Any discussion there?
I just want to go through the board if we can, Larry.
Sure.
Yep, I just I so let's just bounce back to number one for a second. On number one, which was the whether the OSRD achieves greater flexibility and creativity in the design of residential unit development than conventional plan. Larry, are you comfortable with that?
I am.
Okay, George, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
No concerns. Okay, Leslie, are you comfortable or any concerns with that?
I'm comfortable.
Okay. Woody, any concerns or or issues with number one?
Uh, no, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, and Mary?
Okay.
Okay, great. On number two, and I'll let you drive from here, Larry.
All right. So I'll restate number two, whether the OSRD promotes permanent preservation of open space, agricultural land, forestry land, other natural resources, including water bodies and wetlands, and historical and archaeological resources. Again, do you want to poll the board, Peter?
Please, yes, you could. Go ahead.
All right, well, Pete, how do you feel?
I'm comfortable with it. I don't have any concerns.
All right, George?
Yes.
Uh, Leslie?
Yes.
Uh, Woody?
Yes, I'm comfortable.
Uh, Mary?
Yes.
And for the record, so am I. I'm comfortable with it. Item number three, whether the OSRD promotes a less sprawling and more efficient form of development that consumes less open land and conforms to existing topography and natural features better than a conventional subdivision. Pete?
I I believe that the source OSRD does do that, yes.
And George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Uh, Woody?
Yes.
Uh, Mary?
Yes.
And I agree. I'm also and I agree with the with the board. Four, whether the OSRD reduces the total amount of disturbance on the site. Pete?
Uh, there's a lot going on, but I would think yes.
George?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes, I agree.
And Mary?
Yes.
Yeah, and for the record, I agree with Pete. It was it was particularly under earlier iterations of the plan. It was a close question, but I I think I'm in agreement. Five, whether the OSRD furthers the goals and policies of the open space and master plans. Pete?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Yeah, and and I would note, I I mean, I agree, and I'd note that both the open space and master plans promote the use of the OSRD wherever it's practical and beneficial. Number six, whether the OSRD facilitates the construction, maintenance of streets, utilities, and public services in a more economical and efficient manner. Pete?
Uh, yes, I'm comfortable, and this will be a private way, yes.
George?
Yes.
Uh, Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I agree as well. Seven, whether the concept plan and its supporting narrative documentation complies with all sections of the zoning bylaw. Pete?
Uh, yes.
Uh, George?
Yes.
Uh, Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I agree as well. So those are the decision criteria, Pete. I don't know.
Okay. Martha, are there also any other requirements that we need to consider with regards to the the OSRD? Now, I I I know we we should probably just drill back on some other things, you know, our yield plan, the open space, and the purpose and intent. Are there other components that I need to discuss with the board?
Um, I think those are the major ones. Yeah.
All right, so let's just kind of we're just going to kind of backtrack a little bit, guys, and I just want to talk for a moment about the yield plan. We've previously stated that the and the board feels that the yield plan is technically compliant with the subdivision rules and regs with zoning. I just want to confirm that that is still the case. Larry?
Uh, yes.
Okay, George?
Yes.
Okay. Leslie?
Yes.
Okay, Woody?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. With regards to the open space, does the proposed open space meet the bylaw requirements? And this is where we we get into this minimum 50% of the upland on the property, and the upland is contiguous. The area appears to be quite sufficient. But the concern has been that the upland is not contiguous. And so I'm I'm I want to get a feeling from the board that they feel a waiver would be necessary to achieve this component of the open space requirement. Larry?
I I do believe a waiver would be the appropriate be able to address this.
Okay. George?
Your first question is, may the board waive it?
May the board waive it? Brian, could you help with that question that George is raising?
And I don't. My apologies, I don't have the particular section in front of me, but my understanding is that it is within the board's jurisdiction to do that. Whether or not you do it is a separate question, but I think George's question was more fundamental.
Okay, George, is that answer your question? Okay. Beautiful, thank you. Um, Leslie?
I think a waiver would be in order.
Okay. Woody?
I agree, a waiver would be appropriate.
Okay, Mary?
Form it up on the way.
Okay. Martha, help me here, just so I just want to make sure that I open understand the open space, a piece of it. We could probably stop screen sharing, I think, right?
Okay, beautiful. May I just offer, I don't mean to interrupt, but I didn't have my finger on the the provision, but it's 12A1 last sentence. The planning board may waive this requirement for all or part of the required open space when it is determined that allowing non-contiguous open space will promote the goals of this bylaw and or protect identified primary and secondary conservation areas. So that's that's the citation.
Okay, beautiful, thank you. You know, and I just want to, we we've talked about this open space, and it's bounced around a little bit, you know, as to whether there is going to be somebody overseeing it, HOA, whether it was going to be the the town, whether it was going to be handed to another entity. And Martha, help help me understand, if if that is the case, does the does the open space actually have to? Would it be deeded? Is it would that be a separate lot basically carved out of this process?
I think there there are different ways that it could be done. One would be to carve out a a separate lot and convey that to a nonprofit or another entity. The other is to to keep it as part of that, but put a conservation restriction on it, which could be held by a nonprofit or by the town, by the Conservation Commission.
Okay, I want to ask council, Brian, do you have any recommendations or insights as to just so I have a appreciation of how that might look, what that would look like?
Well, so so Ms. Taylor's description is correct. I mean, there's more than one approach to to accomplishing that, and there's sort of strengths and weaknesses of both. But fundamentally, if the will of the board is that the open space be conveyed in fee to, for example, the Conservation Commission to be held as conservation land under chapter 40, section 8C, then it would need to be deeded out, and the ramification would be in order to deed it out, it'd have to be a lot. Now, you accomplish something very similar by just having a conservation restriction, which is the board knows is a state-approved restriction that runs in perpetuity. But that the interest held by the town or the third party is just rights under the conservation restriction. They don't own the land. You just own the rights under the restriction to enforce it, oversee it, monitor, maintain it. The actual fee would be owned by, you know, the homeowners association presumably. So, you know, both approaches accomplish something very similar, but in different ways. So you may want to think about, you know, which is more appropriate for for the board's needs. What do you think is more consistent with, you know, the goals and purposes of the bylaw? You know, in light and not so much the legal ramifications, but what what's more consistent with what you're hoping to accomplish by protecting this land?
Okay, thank you, Brian. Larry, any thoughts on that?
No, I, well. It, I don't know if we're in a position at this point to be making that type of decision.
Yeah.
Brian, would it would it be appropriate to craft something, a condition that it say be offered to the Conservation Commission or the town or a nonprofit at at some future point? Where I'm going going is I don't want to delay this this project any further.
Yep.
I'm sorry, is my question clear enough or?
No, I I think I I take your meaning. So one of the things that can sometimes sort of stall this conversation is, in order to obtain the fee, a lot of things have to happen. The commission needs to get involved. They need to take a vote. The select board needs to approve that, and that's a long process, and we don't know what the result of it would be, so we don't want to necessarily go down that road and hold things up or write a decision that's conditioned on it, not knowing if it'll ever happen. But if it is something important to this board that you are interested in the possibility of the commission potentially obtaining a fee in the land, one way I've approached that is to do something, you know, similar to what you suggested. So a condition that would require the land be offered, but if for some reason the town or whoever it's offered to decides not to accept it, it just reverts back to the homeowner. And then that way, the applicants fulfill their obligation. They don't actually get any of their permitting held up or violate their permitting or be in non-compliance by virtue of not conveying the land, because their obligation begins and ends with offering it. And if for some reason it's refused, then they continue on their their merry way as as they would have otherwise, but that's that's one way to sort of keep the option open. But you wouldn't write that condition unless it was of interest to to this board and the town generally to actually have the land. Otherwise, it's sort of a moot point. If there's no appetite for that, you don't need to necessarily write a condition like that. If it's just unclear, and maybe there's an appetite for that, then I would put a condition like that in there so that you can figure it out a little bit farther down the road.
Right, what once we we vote on the OSRD, assuming that it's approved, there'll be further review. Can can we make that decision at that point in the process?
It's.
Yeah, I I think we could, you know, hold it open. I mean, once you make it a condition of the OSRD, the next filing would have to comply with that condition, so we'd have to just be very artful. So that what comes next in terms of an application and a filing is going to be consistent with that condition, so that you'll have a chance to consider it. And so that it'll be on the table for discussion without necessarily tying anyone's hands. So I think I think we could be creative and draft something along those lines if that was the board's will.
Okay, thank you, Brian. I just wanted to start the board. I wanted the board to start to think about this, because I think we have to kind of look at it at some point in time, but so thank you, Larry. George, any thoughts in the discussion that was just stimulated?
No, thank you. None right now.
Thank you. Leslie, any thoughts?
Not yet.
Okay, great. Woody, any thoughts?
Uh, no comment, no.
Great, thank you. Mary?
Um, no comment right now.
Okay, so continuing along, we touched on the yield plan. We've touched on the open space now. With regards to the purpose and intent, does is is the proposed OSRD consistent with the purpose and intent of the OSRD bylaw? Larry, what are your thoughts on that?
I think we actually went over that
Right.
in an earlier meeting. And I I think you're referring to section C1 of the bylaw. Which in in large measure measures the or excuse me, tracks the language of the criteria, so I'm comfortable with it, enjoy.
Okay, beautiful. George?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, beautiful. Leslie?
Yes.
A great, Woody?
Yes, I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you. And Mary?
Yeah.
Okay, um, now I want to touch on the design process. Are we comfortable with the applicant has followed the OSRD design, OSRD design process? Larry?
I have no issues.
Okay, beautiful. George?
Everything's fine.
Beautiful. Leslie?
No issues.
Okay, great. Woody?
I'm good.
Beautiful. And Mary? Okay, great. The next component I want to just touch on is the design standard. Do we feel that the applicant has met all the OSRD design standards laid out by our bylaw? Larry?
Yes.
Okay, great. George?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Leslie?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Woody?
Yeah.
Uh, and Mary?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. So with regards to any waivers, as of right now, the applicant has no stated waivers that are required. But we might have the this waiver with regards to the contiguous component. Any other concerns with waiver issues, Larry?
Other than we've discussed, no.
Okay, George?
Yeah.
Okay, Leslie?
No.
Okay, Woody?
No.
Okay. And Mary?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so with that, I think we've kind of gone through the decision criteria and the components of the yield plan, open space, purpose and intent, design, process standards, and waivers. Okay, so I think that that allows us to at least have an appreciation that this does meet the threshold of our OSRD criteria, which we needed to get to. And at this point in time, I'm going to ask the applicant, either Jill, Steve, or Mark, if they have any comments or questions? if they have any comments or questions regarding our discussion thus far.
Good evening, Jill. I just had one comment. I appreciate the boards going through those criteria. It was, it was very helpful and we appreciate that. I do have one follow-up with regard to the ownership of the open space and imposing a condition. This board has complete right to tell us if you want us to own it or not. But there needs to be an appreciation of the fact that we actually need certainty in the decision because we can't have a condominium association maintain the open space if it doesn't own it. So we are going to, when you see that plan, Martha, would it be possible, or even if Steve, to share the screen, just to show the board the open space for a moment? And I can explain it better when I, when I show you what I mean by the maintenance obligations, Ms. Pecos?
Oh, well, I think we've seen the plan.
Oh, I just thought I can, I can talk about it. So the open space has a primary field and in a secondary, a primary field that's all metal. So that's the front portion. So on the front portion, somebody has to mow it. Somebody has to maintain that gravel approach and somebody has to maintain that parking area. The condominium association isn't allowed to maintain land that it does not own. So that would, I remember how you said that we're not going to maintain anything. We would maintain the road. We would never maintain anything in the open space if, if the condo doesn't own it, not that we don't want to, we cannot. So I just want to make sure the board understands that and that the purpose of the open space is simply to preserve in perpetuity. The ownership means nothing other than creating obligations for the landowner, especially when it's a condominium and especially when it's a CR, which requires, and then Brian can, Mr. Winner, excuse me, Attorney Winner, can go proceed with that. But when you have a CR, it takes literally an act of the legislature to overturn the decision of the executive office of the secretary. You cannot change the CR. So it's in perpetuity, open space. Nobody can touch it. And you, as the town, has complete control because that CR, I would think, would be overseen by your conservation commission. And that is a very typical scenario. I just wanted to make sure the board understood. So even those boardwalks, you know, we, we show the boardwalks have connectivity between all of the, the open space. Because you have like the little walks over BVW. It's not necessarily wet, but it's BVW. That, those will need to be maintained as well. So I just want to make sure the commission, I apologize, the board understands what would be entailed in ownership. And what we would do would be not to create, maybe not to create a lot, maybe we could create a unit or do something because it's never going to be buildable. It's only going to have access off the back. So I don't even, we just carved it out. But I appreciate your indulgence and that's all I really wanted to add. Spago, thank you.
Great, thanks. I just want to check, Brian, any comments on what's been said by?
I generally agree with all of that. And, you know, I, I mentioned, without going into detail, you know, there are costs and benefits to both, to each choice. And ownership, of course, comes with responsibilities, but it also comes with a lot of, you know, control in terms of the direction and future of it. So that's part of the deliberative process that I referred to, that the conservation commission would have to undertake and the, the select board would have to undertake to decide whether or not the town really would want this land. And if weighing all those factors, the answer to that question is no, we'd rather have the homeowners association do all that. Well, then you've got the answer, but we don't have that answer today.
Right, but the problem is that process in my estimation takes six to nine months. And there would be, so there has to be certainty in the decision and it can't be subject to a condition that is not within the control of the applicant and this wouldn't be. And that creates problems for permitting, sale, everything. So I don't mind if this board wants to make a decision one way or another, but a condition that is that open-ended, because, Brian, Attorney Winner, I'm not really sure, when you accept the land, right? I know it's a gift, but do you have to have any type of vote when there's an obligation to maintain? How does that work? I don't, I don't know the answer. Like town meeting vote is what I meant. I apologize.
In this particular, if it were offered to the conservation commission, a town meeting vote is not required. So in fact, we do these in, in conservation permitting all the time as mitigation in compensation for, you know, buffer zone disturbances, et cetera. An applicant will offer land to the conservation commission and a condition of the permit would be that they offer it. But since we don't know if the select board will ultimately approve it, we, we write it in such a way that the applicant's obligation is to offer it. And then they produce a deed to the commission. It has a certificate pursuant to chapter 40, section 8c. The commission then votes to accept it. It then gets moved to the select board and then the select board has to approve that decision. So if either one of those two things fails, you know, then the town doesn't get the land. We don't own the land. But the developer's obligation is simply to offer it. And the way I would contemplate the condition is that the condition's fulfilled if they offer. And if the town elects not to accept the land, then all the obligations would just revert to the homeowners association. So you would, you would know the outcome, whichever the choice is made.
All right, great. Brian, thank you for that clarification. That's helpful and it would be helpful for the board as we go, we go forward. And I just want to ask to make sure there aren't any, any additional comments or concerns with what's been said with any board members? Or if there are any questions that have come up throughout this process or, or discussion. Larry, any, any concerns or anything?
No, I don't have anything.
George?
No concerns.
Okay.
No.
All right, great. Leslie?
Oh.
Was that no, Leslie?
Yes, yes, no.
Yes, no, thank you. Woody, any, any other concerns?
No, no concerns, Peter. Thank you.
Okay, great. Mary?
No.
Okay, great, beautiful. So before we open up a public comment, I still have the door, Martha. Do we have any emails since 421 that we need to, to just put into a record or to note? I'm sorry, you muted Martha. I hope I didn't do that to you. I might have. I was answering the door. Sometimes I go up there and I push the wrong button.
It's okay. We did receive four emails. Do you want me to pull up the matrix or?
You could, sure. That's how we've done it in the past, sure.
Bear with me for a second here. All right, for some reason. And once again, getting the sharing is paused message. And I'm sorry, that's happening again. So I'll just read these if that's all right.
Okay, sure thing.
So we received emails from Eva Jackman, Kendra Bo Parlon, Bonnie and Christopher Simpson and the Tufts family since the last, since the last session on 42121.
Okay.
And these were all in opposition to the project.
Okay.
I apologize for the.
It's okay. Um, great. So I think that being the case, thank you, Martha. We could ask the public to raise hands and be recognized. And we're looking for any new, new comments or information to the board. We've had a number of comments and we've had, had discussion on this. So the board is looking for any new comments or new concerns that would be helpful. So I'll open that up, Martha, and if you can let us know who, who reaches out.
I'm not seeing any yellow raised hands yet.
Okay, I don't see any people raising hands.
Well, Peter Gancheff has just raised his hand.
All right, Peter, if you, first and last name and address, please, thanks.
Sure, I'm Peter Gancheff. I'm at 117 High Road in Newbury. And I actually prepared a PowerPoint presentation, which I would like to present. It's not very long.
Oh, Peter, we lost you. Peter, I, we don't have audio. We can't hear you.
Hello?
Okay, you're back. Go ahead.
Little PowerPoint.
Peter, you're, I mean, broken up. I'm not sure if it's internet connection or cell, cell signal connection. Looks like he might be rejoining. So let's see if he comes, comes back. Martha, are there any other individuals that you're seeing that might have a public comment?
I'm not seeing any other. Catherine O'Brien is waving her hand physically.
Okay, Catherine, name and an address. And I guess, again, we're looking for new, new information, new, new comments. You'll need to unmute yourself. So you'll need to unmute yourself, Catherine?
Okay. Well, good evening. I have just basic questions.
So Catherine, just for the record, name and address, please, thanks.
Oh, sorry. Catherine O'Brien, 103 High Road, Newbury, Mass. And I am a director butter to the proposed OSRD. Most of my questions, and I guess I have a few comments, have to do with how the yield was determined and when did the applicant defend the yield? I know that in December, the planning board did not have any idea what the yield would be. And that was because there was a conflict between, is a two-family going to be two separate lots with two separate houses? Or is it going to be one lot? And so in December, I, I know that that wasn't decided. And then, Peter, I believe you tasked the three attorneys, me, Weiner and Mann, to determine the yield. Is that correct?
Actually, no, we didn't ask anyone to determine the yield. And just for clarification, the board has already stated that they are comfortable that the yield plan has been accepted. So the board is comfortable with the yield plan. So is there something new that you want to?
Yes, it is, because I'm not comfortable with the yield plan. And the reason I'm not is just because of what you said to begin. We have to go by the rules and regulations. And we have on, I'll give you the reference so you know, so you'll be fine. The reference is 1176. And basically it is in the rules and regulations and it states one dwelling on one lot. Now, a two-family is considered a dwelling. What you're missing is that the number of lots are the yield, not the number of homes. And so I went back and I looked up all the other OSRDs that had been presented to the planning board over the years. And with, with no exceptions. Well, there was one exception, but, but that was another DePiero subdivision on Wilkesher. His, his yield was three lots and then he put in a road and then that came up to 19. But let me just tell you, Colby Village, Caldwell Farm, Scotland Woods. I have two others, which I'll try to remember, but I know you give Jill plenty of time to look, to take her time. So I'm going to do the same thing. But all of these. Almost all. Put in a proposal for the number of lots. And some of them were very large lots that could have had two families on them. And then the conceptual plan with the number of lots was the same as the definitive plan that was approved. So this shows me, and it should show you, that it is not the number of living units. It is the number of lots.
Okay, so let me just hold you right there. I'm just going to ask, Brian, can you just clarify this point so that we can put this, this concern to rest?
Mr. Chairman, this question came up many meetings ago as to whether or not the, the formula required consideration of the dwelling units or the lots, et cetera. And that, this was looked at. And there was some public comment on it at that time, including comment from former planning board member, I believe, who was part of the drafting team. So we, we had a lot of dialogue on that very subject. And what was concluded and what I, what conclusion I reached myself was that the analysis is, is not hinged in that sense that it's based, the less strict language of the bylaw requires that you look at the dwelling units. So.
That's not, that's not correct.
Catherine?
Was examined. It was, a legal review was performed on it. And the board considered it and made a determination.
Well, that's good enough for me to appeal the decision. Just wanted to let you know. I think that the, the rules and regulations are clear. They state that it is up to the applicant to defend the yield. And instead of the applicant defending the yield, we have the representative from the town council defending the yield. And we have the chairman defending the yield. Through all of the.
I'm going to interrupt you for a moment.
All of the videos and I.
I'm going to interrupt you for a moment. Now, please just hold on for a second. These points have been discussed. They've been vetted. Council for the town has, has given the opinion. That being the case, the board is not, that, there is no, there's no room to discuss this any further. So if there is something new or different that you want to submit to the board now, please do. Otherwise, I'm going to move along.
Okay, then I do have a couple of other things. According to your own rules and regulations, the concept plan in its design will be very similar to the, the, okay, any conceptual plan requiring a special permit issued by the planning board shall specifically state that the OSRD shall substantially comply with the concept plan. And this application is obviously not true. And that would be 11253, relationship between conceptual plan and the OSRD. And the dwelling, one dwelling, one lot was 1176. So then I wanted to go on and let you know that you have been. One of the things that has been brought up over and over that is not true. You brought up over and over that the open space and the forested area will never be built upon. It will always be the way it is. Well, of course it will. You can't build back there. That's number one. It's all wet. You cannot build back there. And number two, you can't, if, if you did not approve the OSRD, the current owner would still be entitled to a definitive plan, which is his right as a landowner. However, he would only have four lots. And he wouldn't build on it. It'll cost too much to do that. So probably that would remain open and would go for a farm or a horse property or something too. So you can't say that one of the benefits of the OSRD is that the land will never be built upon. It, 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 it can't. There isn't enough frontage. Additionally, if he did build on it, the house would have to be moved because any house that faces or, or borders a highway, according to state regulations, has to be 50 feet from the road. It can't be as close as it is. These are all the points.
Catherine, Catherine, please, is there something specific that you wanted to, to give this board for new information? New, new information, please.
I'm giving it to you.
This is, we, we have, we have had discussions in the past. This is, we have, we have had discussions in the past, these issues have been addressed. The board is comfortable with what has been presented. Is there something new that the board needs to know about? Something?
I'm going to go back and review all of the tapes to see exactly when this was discussed and reviewed. Because that will be another reason for an appeal. You must have discussed it outside of the public hearing, which is a violation of the public, of the open meeting law. But if you did, then there's another one. So I'm not happy, the people who do not want this are not happy. They feel that it's been railroaded, and so do I. And so I'm just putting you on notice, so you can do whatever you want to do, which is what you're gonna do anyway. But I will not let this drop.
Thank you, Catherine, the board does appreciate you participating tonight, thank you very much.
Thanks, Catherine.
You're welcome.
Martha, is there someone else who would like to, is Peter, are you back with us?
I hope so, I don't know, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So I was gonna prepare a PowerPoint presentation, but it sounds like a lot of material's already been covered. But I would like to concur with Catherine, I'm a little uncomfortable with the yield plan and going from five lots of duplexes to 10 lots of single-family homes. It seems there's a mix of apples and oranges there that I feel uncomfortable with. I also don't think that this is the right project for this location as it's currently configured. And I know that Mr. DePiero was a good developer of residential properties, but I think the density is just too high. And I had a picture of the Colby Farm Development Newbury Port. And I think it's a very similar footprint, when you look at that, you just see a wall of houses surrounded by beautiful metals and stuff like that. So I think it's not the right project for this location, but and I do agree with Catherine, I'm very comfortable with the yield plan, the way it was, I don't, it just doesn't seem right.
Peter, thank you very much for participating tonight, we do appreciate your insight and your input. And I'm glad that the connection did succeed, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Martha, do we have any other hands?
Yes, Dr. David Resick is raising his hand physically.
Great, Dr. Resick, if you would name an address, please, thank you very much. And you're muted, sir.
How's that, David Resick?
Perfect.
Okay, David Resick, Six Will Shire Road over Newbury. Well, first of all, I want to tell you guys, I appreciate you guys giving you time to the planning board. This is a lot of work, and I really appreciate it as a resident of Newbury. So I just want to give you my experience with Mark.
I'm sorry.
Will Shire Road is obviously the last one Mark did here, and I was one of the first people here. The only thing I can share with you is that I think this is a great development over here, I think the people are really happy. I think it's a really nice addition to the town of Newbury. I think all the people that are here love being here. I think that Mark did a nice job with the common area, that's open area to us. I think it's an area that we all can enjoy, that we like. And I think overall, I think, I think all the people here, there are eight of us, I think would say that the project is a huge success and is a real addition to the town of Newbury. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about my process with Mark and how things went and so forth. So if anybody has any questions.
We want to thank you for your insight and your help and your comments tonight, it helps the board with its process. Thank you for being here, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great.
How do I do it, Ken?
Martha, do we have anyone else?
We do not see any other.
I'd like to speak.
I'm sorry.
I'm Angel Bobalan, I'd like to say something.
Sure, name and address, please.
I'm Angel Bobalan, and I live at 25 Withington Street. I just have a couple of comments. How how come all of you on the board do not like put into consideration of all the people that are opposed of this? You don't like listening to what other people have to think about this in the town of Newbury. And I just don't understand how so many plans have changed and things are so different. And the wording is just so backwards sometimes, and no one ever listens to us. Us, and how can he make this big, long road go down when there's a seven-foot easement? You have to think about that, of the seven-foot easement that he's gonna take to try and go down, that's not his. Have you ever thought about that?
I can try to help you with that point. Our role, the planning board's role, we're not, our role is not involving the easement.
I understand that, but
Hold on, please, you asked me a question that I'm gonna try to answer. So that's not in our purview, and I can have town council also help explain why that is the case too. So just give me one second, and I'm gonna ask attorney, wanna just answer that question so that you can feel comfortable with what's going on with that. Okay, so hold on for one second, Brian?
Mr. Chairman, that topic came up much earlier on and then resurfaced sort of in the middle of the process more recently. We looked at the easement, and we tried to ascertain whether or not it played any role as a legal matter in our deliberative process as required under the law and determined that it was a civil relationship between parties and nothing within the jurisdiction of the planning board. So it was examined, it was not disregarded. In fact, we spent a great deal of time looking at the jurisdictional question, but determined ultimately, we didn't have any jurisdiction.
Thank you, Brian.
I have another question, but it is, it has been to civil, and it is Ms. O'Brien's. So how can he take some of that and you not take into that consideration before you can approve everything?
So Angel, what you have to understand is, if there is a, if there's a civil land court decision, then that is where that is addressed. We're addressing what is a forest and the plans and how they relate to our bylaws and the process of an OSRD, that's what we're here to determine.
Right, right, but how can that be approved if that's not looked at?
So again, I have to defer to the town's council, because the question is, it is not within our jurisdiction to get involved in that. We're here to look at specifically whether this meets the criteria of a particular type of project in OSRD. That's what we're here to determine.
Okay.
That's what our role is here.
Okay, I understand that, okay.
Okay, great, 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 do you have another question?
Yeah, so how come you don't look at all the people that are against this project and putting something that is just way too big? How come you don't listen to us people that pay taxes in this town?
Sure, sure, and Angel, I appreciate the sensitivity of developing farmland, I do. One of the reasons that I moved to this town was because of the beautiful rural nature and the agricultural base that the town has. And, and, and property owners own property. And if a property owner wants to do something with their property, they have the right to do that. And as my co-chair, Larry Murphy, indicated at the beginning part of this meeting, our role is not to say yes, development or no development.
Oh, no, I understand that, I understand that.
And so what we have to do is when an applicant comes before the planning board with an application for a particular type of project that we have jurisdiction over, we can say yes, it meets the criteria, or no, it doesn't. And that's what our role is.
Right, right.
We're not here to say, yes, you can develop this, or no, you cannot develop this. An OSRD follows the direction of the master plan for this community. That's what, that's one of the guidelines of our master plan, is say, yes, make OSRDs. So this applicant is proposing an OSRD which meets that criteria, and that is in following with what the town voted on for a master plan. So we're trying to follow the direction which has been laid before us. We might all have our own personal opinions and our own sensitivities. But what we must do in a process like this is follow the guidance of what the procedure is for this board, and that's what we're trying to do.
Right, and I understand that, I do understand that. But, but in the beginning of this whole process, he didn't have enough frontage, but now all of a sudden he does. You know, it's just so many different changes of plans to change everybody's mind is just not right. And that's all I have to say, and then you people have to start thinking about us in this community that pay taxes, listening to the people for once, you know?
And we also live in this community, and we also pay taxes, and we try to be sensitive and to adhere to the needs of the community. So I appreciate you participating tonight.
And to them to say that they're gonna build out back, how the people are gonna get out back, you know? It's just, you know, different things that people need to look at, you know? Getting out back to go in the woods, how are you gonna get there? There's no room to make any trails out there, you know, it's just crazy, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, we appreciate your participation this evening. Martha, where are we with individuals?
Peter Ganchep's hand is up, but I'm not sure it was lowered before.
No, oh, no, it was lower, but I did have one follow-up question, if I may.
Okay, Peter, go ahead, please.
Yeah, so the planning board meeting of the 21st of April, a matrix was presented on 15 Coleman Road that had a table of continuous upland property, basic. And so basically, it was sort of a report card of what the starting point was for the yield plan and what the bonuses were for 70% OSRDs. I was wondering if we can get the same thing for this property.
That has been provided, and that was in a hearing, Brian, was that maybe?
February 17th, I believe.
Thank you. So, yes, it did occur, Peter, and it was
It did occur?
Yes.
So what was the final yield plan approved?
So the most recent yield plan is the yield, is the yield plan that this board is using as a reference point.
And that's based on the February calculations or some follow-up calculations?
I want to make sure I have the right date, Brian, correct date for that.
So the table that you had asked about earlier on was the open space calculations.
Yeah.
So basically, a matrix or a grid showing that. So that plan was discussed, I think, between the applicants' council and myself on February 3rd. And then it was discussed at the open meeting publicly with the board on February 17th.
Okay.
Subsequent to that, the yield plan, I think, had changed, but that's different than the open space. And the yield plan was, in keeping with the, you know, the conventional subdivision parameters, it didn't have the open space. So those are different plans, so that
But doesn't the yield plan, oh, sorry.
So the, I think the was at the next meeting, and I don't have that right in front of me, I'd have to look through my notes a little deeper.
Yeah, but doesn't the yield plan affect the bonus lots, bonus lot calculations?
Brian, do you want to handle that one?
Yes, there's a discretionary provision that allows the board to consider bonus slots if they're asked for. But again, we discussed that when those revisions were made, and the applicant changed their position on whether or not and how much they were asking for in terms of bonus lots, so that, that was all discussed around that time.
Okay. So for the 10, so for the 10 lots, that's an 80% OSRD or 75% or I guess, to get the OSRD approved with the 10 new lots, what percent of land needs to be put in the OSRD?
Martha, do you know that number off the top of your head right now?
And under the OSRD, 50% of the upland, which needs to be contiguous, which goes back to the discussion about waiver previously, needs to be set aside as open space. In this case, the applicant, the applicant had previously requested bonus units, but is no longer requesting bonus units. So the 10, the 10 units that are being shown are based on the five, five, two families in the yield plan.
Okay, got it, okay, thank you.
Okay, Peter, thanks, thanks very much, and I'm glad your questions were able to be answered. Are there any other hands at this point in time, Martha?
Do not see any other hands.
All right, I just want to go back to our board to see if there's any questions from our discussion thus far. Larry, any comments or concerns?
No.
Okay, great, George, any questions, comments, or concerns? Beautiful, Leslie, any questions, comments, or concerns?
No.
Great, Woody, any questions, comments, or concerns?
I do have one thing, and I'm not sure if this is the right time to talk about this or not, but in the open space, so back since we've been talking about the open space, on the plan here, where these septic fields are gonna be future and present, there, around the outside of it, there are poles, a pollinator meadow border, northeastern pollinator meadow seed mix. And I have a real concern with that, because basically, that's, those are species of plants that are great for a pollinator meadow for butterflies, but I have concerns that with the neighboring hayfields there, a lot of these things spread very easily, and I wouldn't want to see one of these neighboring hayfields disturbed with the, these plant species going to seed and reseeding themselves in the neighboring fields. There's no protection from that happening. And in light of that, I'd like to just see this open space behind the, this at the, at the end of the road, maybe bimonthly mode like it says here, but not planted in a, planted in a grass, not a, not a pollinator meadow that well, milkweed and other things of that sort. I don't, I wanted to mention it because I don't know if this is the right time to mention it, or if we'll have time in the future to discuss.
Woody, it's an appropriate time to bring up questions, and I had not even thought of that. And here we are, you know, in an agricultural community, and I'm very glad that you're bringing this to light. Let me ask Martha, do we have any is there, how do we handle this? Is, do we restrict that type of situation so it would not create a problem with a contiguous agricultural field?
I don't know that this necessarily answers your question, but there does need to be an open space management plan that would be developed.
Okay.
And in that plan, there might, you know, there might be some provisions. I don't know if the applicant's landscape architect might be able to make some recommendations on how to contain you know, seed from the pollinator meadow and keep it from, you know, potentially contaminating the fields.
Okay, all right, so that would be something I think, Woody, that we would need to work on a little bit.
Okay, great, and you know, because there are native species of of, that they could be seeded down and that flowers and could also back as a pollinator and for the bees. And they could mow it bimonthly, you know, like a clover that it forms a head and forms a flower. So it's just a concern of mine, and I would hate to see it ruin one of the neighboring hayfields on either side of the property.
Perfect, thank you, Woody, for bringing it to light, I appreciate that very much, thank you. The applicant will also be sensitive to that, thank you, thank you. Um, okay. So, Brian, I'm gonna turn to you just to help the board now with regards to our kind of next steps, because we've gone through our criteria, and we've kind of met the the concerns of that, and we've kind of discussed other components, yield, open space, purpose and intent, design, standards. So meeting the design of the RSID, I think we're there. So tell me where we go here, because I want to, I want to keep this, you know, advancing.
So the next step in the process would be to start thinking about what kind of conditions or requirements you would want to see in a draft decision. Sufficient that, you know, Martha and I, Ms. Taylor and I, could start producing something for the board to consider. So if the board is able to give us a little direction, you know, as you all know, in the past, I think we found that to be a very useful tool in sort of reaching your ultimate decision. But it sounds like now that you Uh, but it sounds like uh now that you've gone through and sort of taken a straw poll and all the the requisite findings and criteria. Um, we'd be in a position to start crafting something uh that the board could consider and look at. Uh, and so the question of the board would be, do you want us to do that? Um, and what kind of uh, you know, conditions or parameters would you like us to to address? Uh, if you're in a position to do that, or we can, you know, take the the first crack at it, uh and you can add to it as we go along.
Um, I think that's a great recommendation of 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 starting the draft of uh the OSRD. Uh special permit decision and then probably um uh visiting with it, uh probably at um our next uh. Our next hearing. Um, uh, let me just get a feel if uh board members feel the same way. Uh Larry, your thoughts?
Yeah, no, I agree.
Okay, great. Uh, George?
I concur.
Okay, uh Leslie?
I agree.
Uh, Woody?
Yes, I agree.
Uh, Mary?
Just thoughts on um having a draft.
Right.
Yes, I.
Okay, uh then I I guess I'd entertain a a a motion uh to direct our funding director uh to and to work with council to draft. Uh, uh, the uh the starts of a draft for OSRD special permit decision. Uh, if someone would like to make that motion.
I would.
Uh Larry, I think you made the motion and George, I think you're gonna second it.
Second.
All right, uh, any discussion on the motion? Larry, discussion?
No.
Uh, George's discussion?
No.
Uh, Leslie's discussion?
No.
Uh, Woody's discussion?
None.
Uh, uh, Mary's discussion?
No.
On the motion, how do you vote, uh Larry?
Yes.
Great. Uh, George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, great. Uh, Leslie, how do how are you voting?
Yes.
Great. Well, Woody, how are you voting?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I'm very, how do you feel? Wonderful. Uh, and the chair is also uh in favor. So um there there we have it. Uh, we have our. Uh, our our marching orders. So Martha, let's take a peek and when we're going to be continuing this hearing.
Right, let's see if I can be a little more successful this time.
Technology works with us, yes. No, okay. Hold on. So what what you have uh? On your spreadsheet.
Okay, let me try this one more time.
Okay. And I'll see if I can pull up a calendar as well. So we're looking at the second and sixteenth. And did we have something in between that we're doing as well?
We have the twenty sixth. We've got Coleman Road and uh two seventeen, two twenty one High Road on the uh twenty sixth.
That's next week.
Um, next week, right.
Time does that start, Martha?
Um, I think it's seven o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And this is on the twenty sixth of June of May, excuse me.
For the previous hearings that were in place, right?
Yep.
Yep. So that's an additional meeting for this month. Um, so then we have the second and the sixteenth, if I have those right.
That's correct.
Okay.
And the second right now, we have nothing scheduled.
Okay.
Amazingly.
Okay, is that going to give enough, is is two weeks gonna be enough time to get a start on a draft? Or are you gonna need more time for for starting that process?
Um, I would really uh like to get Brian's input on that.
Brian, your thoughts?
Well, I I want to work at the board's pace, but um to be truthful, um I have a trial starting. Uh, the week of the twenty fourth, so I I won't be able to get into it uh next week at all.
Okay.
Um, so I think the second would be a little too fast.
Okay, so then we're looking at the sixteenth.
You looking for motion, Pete?
Uh, yes.
That I'd move, we continue the public hearing until our June sixteenth. Uh, uh, to twenty twenty one meeting at seven fifteen P M.
Thank you, there's a second. Uh, thank you, Woody. Okay, um, on on the motion, any discussion, Larry?
No.
Discussion, George?
No.
Discussion, uh, Leslie?
No.
Discussion, Woody?
No, uh, no.
Great, discussion, Mary. Okay, on the motion, how do you vote, uh, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, George?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie? Thank you. Uh, Woody?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Great, and the chair is also in in favor. Very good. Uh, this public hearing will be continued the sixteenth of June. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate you participating. Uh, and we'll continue with our agenda. Thank you. Um, okay, Martha, last that I have here, um, see is uh. Uh, site plan review applications for Newbury Port Turnpike map are forty seven lots, thirty eight and thirty nine owner applicant. Uh, Verrova Valley Realty to LLC continued from five May twenty twenty one. Um, okay, um, let's see. Uh, we need to note that we have revised architectural drawings and revised lighting plan that was submitted to the board in five twelve. A resolving discrepancy noted in our last uh session of the public hearing regarding the number of units. And confirming the color change. So the number of units for confirmation that we landed and that was fourteen, was that right, Martha?
Yes, that's correct, fourteen.
Great. Um, I'm gonna ask uh the applicant's representative if there's any new information or materials to present.
Uh, good evening, TJ Melvin, Millennium Engineering. Uh, good. Uh, at this point, no, there's no other materials to be presented. I can pull up the architecials that the board would like. Uh, nothing else.
Okay, let me see if the board is gonna want to look at that, TJ. Uh, I I'm gonna ask the board members if there's any questions at this point in time. Uh, Larry?
No.
Okay, great. Uh, George?
No.
Uh, great, Leslie?
No.
Uh, Woody?
No.
Thank you. Uh, Mary?
No.
Okay, great. Um, let's see. Um, do we have any public comments, uh Martha, that have uh? Occurred?
Uh, no, we we have not received anything.
Okay, uh, is there anyone in the public that would like to say anything regarding uh this uh site plan review application?
Not seeing any raised hands either physically or.
Okay.
On the list.
Alrighty, um, then I guess should we kind of uh review our um revised draft decision?
Yes, if I can pull it. I don't know what the heck. I I thought I had this issue solved.
Okay, get ready, Larry.
Maybe.
Uh, I'm not very computer savvy, but it's not because we've let other people co-host to share stuff.
No, I think they've. I thought that that might be an issue at one point, but uh. Oh, hey.
The technology gods are with us.
Yes, a miracle, a miracle.
Beautiful.
So let me just make it a little bit bigger.
All right.
And there is our calendar behind it. I don't know if you can see that.
Uh, no. We're gonna stick with this one thing.
I can see it on mine. Uh, here here is the uh, here's the revised decision that was sent to the board and has also been sent to to TJ.
Okay. Um, within the narrative, are there any this uh changes? Uh, page one, no. Page two. There've been no modifications except in the bottom here. Let's see.
And that was really from from last time. The changes had been made, but this reflected the fourteen units, what was on the similar plans, the site plans, not what was in the architecials. And they've now been coordinated.
Okay, great. And.
Then TJ confirmed that the uh approval from SDOT is still pending. So there is a condition um referencing that.
Okay.
And this was a note from me from previously. There have been, there's been no submission so far on design of the signage, so there is a condition referencing that as well.
And then the. Did we discuss the natural gas the last time?
Thank you. Perhaps TJ can address that?
Um, yeah, yes, we did uh touch on it briefly at the last meeting. Um, I know the question was raised about the heating and cooling for the unit. Um, the natural gas is really just proposed for the emergency backup generator at this point.
That answer your question, Woody?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay.
And um, see, I added tonight's hearing date and made made a presumption that the hearing might be closed tonight. Uh, the new architectural drawing dates were added. Under submission materials. And uh, we have a similar discussion. Um, I think there was no. No community impact assessment was done and I have no recollection. Again, this is, it's it's a May in the bylaw, but typically the board has sort of acknowledged that it's waiving that requirement.
Okay, Larry? You can drive the bus on this one again.
Uh, well, I'm I'm fine with the waiver, uh, given the scope of the um uh, the project. Open location.
Okay. Um, George?
No, no comment.
Okay, uh, Leslie?
Good.
Okay, uh, Woody?
Uh, I'm good as well, Pete.
Okay, great. And uh, Mary?
So.
Okay, beautiful. Okay, Martha?
Mm-hmm, okay. So do you want me to fill in any any language here now or show?
Uh, so waiver is not going to be requested. Is that the language?
No, it is requested.
Community was done. I'm trying to read this and I don't. Oh, I I lost you. Okay.
Um, so I said, I think the question might be um a similar request from the applicant uh for a waiver from this requirement.
Right, in the form of a letter.
In the form of a letter.
Yes, okay.
And then uh the justification. For this, um, you know, Larry mentioned due to the, you know, the project's location, but TJ, I don't know if you have any. Any language that you would be including in your letter for the justification.
Uh, TJ?
Oh, sorry. The. Uh, yeah, I mean, we're similar to uh what was mentioned for April Boston Road. I mean, the the. Utilities are provided through Newbury Port. Uh, and you know, the the fourteen residential units plus the. The commercial uh aspect of the building would kind of offset any. Uh, financial burden to the town of Newbury uh in the way of tax revenue.
Okay, so that'll be structured in the form of a a letter then. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, Martha?
Okay.
And we read through these last time, correct?
I think so.
Right.
Yes, yes, we did.
Okay. Um, and Larry, I'll let you do the uh, the conditions, uh, if we need to highlight them. I think it just see.
Sorry, what was that, Pete?
I think we just have to uh discuss, see, in addition, uh, final site plan should be submitted to the planning board. A approval for mastiotot showing any and all improvements required by mastiotot for the access permit.
So that was the added language. I don't have any problem with it.
Okay, great. Uh, George?
No problem.
Beautiful, Leslie?
No problem.
Okay, uh, Woody?
No problem, looks good.
Beautiful, and Mary?
Fine.
Okay, great.
And then there was, uh, there there had been no discussion about construction activity, I don't think.
Okay. So let's see if we're comfortable. Construction activity shall be limited to the hours of seven A M to five P M inclusive Monday through Friday. And if weekend hours are needed between eight A M and two P M inclusive on on Saturday. There should be no construction activity on Sunday, which is a pretty uh common uh position, correct, Martha? That's the language you used in the past.
It is language the board has used in the past. Um, I guess the only question is, given the this project's location, if there's any. Any consideration for anything different or if this would, you know, stay as typically.
Okay.
Stated.
All right, uh, George, I mean, uh, Larry, your thoughts?
I, yeah, I mean, I'm like, as you said, this is pretty standard language and unless the uh, the applicant feels that. This is inadequate, I I'm, you know, you can hear from him, but otherwise I'm fine with it.
Okay, uh, George?
Well, the the applicant hasn't asked for anything else, so I'm very good with this.
That's okay. All right, uh, Leslie?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, uh, Woody?
Um, the applicant hasn't asked and it seems reasonable. I'm fine with that.
Okay, and Mary? Okay, very good. Uh, also, uh, feeling the same way, Martha, and let's see, exterior lighting. Shall be wall mounted and pole fixtures shall be shown in the lighting plan. Uh, E dash one dated May seventh, twenty twenty one. Okay, so that was the clarification.
Right, that was a clarification and and the color temperature of the light bulbs has been changed to three thousand K.
Okay. Beautiful.
I guess my my re- remaining question would be whether the board would like to change and to um. Be consistent with the language that we discussed for eighty four Boston Road.
Let's do that, yes. Uh, and is, are you comfortable with that, Larry?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Uh, George?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Leslie?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Woody?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Okay, beautiful. Okay.
Right, so if you all are okay with it, I'm just gonna highlight it and then change that language afterwards.
Okay, great.
Right.
And the only other thing, I think we talked about it last time, but there had been some concern about. I'm just looking back to make sure that there's nothing in here. Some concern about the um. The area that's labeled tenant gymnasium on the first floor and some concern about making sure that it not be. Commercial or retail space.
Right.
In the future.
Right.
Um, so the question is whether there should be any any condition. In in this to that effect.
I'm not sure the wording, but as something to the effect of as as shown. Um, on those, on that space there.
Uh, you know, how how about something like um, any change of use? Of of uh those spaces would require modification of the site plan, something approval, something like that. Would that work?
What if we added that to, oh, so no modification of the proof site plan, including change of use for any of the?
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's good, Martha.
Arthur, would we be able to say something kind of like any, any change in the size of the retail? Slash commercial space? I just didn't know like if it switches from say when a doctor's office to a retail shop. You know, I mean, I don't know if that will require them to come back to the board.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, see your point.
Oh, yeah, that's. Yeah, I mean, the the concern really is the 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 tenant space and the uh. The commercial space, whatever it's gonna be, is kind of undesignedated, except in in terms of size.
You could probably say that uh the space would be limited to use only for the tenants and for no other benefit. Whatever use there is has to be related to the tenants, even like storage, personal property. Can't do anything else with it commercially, it's just for the tenants.
Uh, that's that's the intent, George, for sure. And I think TJ, you mentioned that this space, this concept is kind of uh. Looks as to what it will be. TJ, is that right? Is that accurate?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it does really, but no, no talk specifically about what that area will be.
Okay, all right. Um, Martha, how can we uh incorporate that concept into? Oh.
I was trying to think. I was trying to think something like the ground ground floor area designated for tenant use shall not be converted to commercial use or something like that in the future.
No modification.
Use of the spaces for tenants only not to be modified for commercial purposes.
Non commercial, non commercial proof is for tenant use only. I don't know.
Right, although I think that might still leave the door open for converting some of that to to commercial. And I think, you know, the concern here is that you know, the parking requirements are based on, you know, a certain number of living units and a certain square footage of commercial space.
Right.
So TJ, any suggestions?
The only thing I would think is, you know, the the commercial space provided on the first floor of the building should not exceed three thousand square feet without, you know, going back to the planning board. And by no means shall the remaining portion of the building of the first floor be used for residential units. The intent is that area to be an accessory use to the residential unit above.
So.
Again, now the grid.
So, well, let's try to see. The first floor commercial space exceed three thousand, three thousand square feet. And the area design designate. Although, I mean, they could reconfigure. I'm so I'm sorry, I'm just kind of thinking, you know, thinking through, they could reconfigure so that some of the commercial area that's shown now became tenant area. What about and the remainder of the first floor shall be shall remain designated for tenant use?
Yes.
Yes. Then it usually.
Use of the tenant, so that that nails that part. That sums it up.
Oh, my. Yep.
Does that work?
That's the word.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eight-five people doing an edit. That's pretty good. Six, right?
Does that make it a camel?
It does. And that's at, let's see, that's at nine thirty at night, and we're still talking to each other. That's great. Okay.
Right, we're laughing.
We are. Okay, I think. Yeah, I think that's good. I I just want to make sure TJ, is that is that comfortable with everybody in the board? Larry, you comfortable?
Yes.
George, you comfortable?
Yes.
Leslie, you comfortable?
Yes.
Are you comfortable?
Yes, definitely.
Mary, you comfortable?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure the applicant is also comfortable with these modifications. TJ?
Yep.
Wonderful. That being the case, I would love to entertain a motion to grant the site plan approval and approve the decision as amended.
So move.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second? There's a second with Woody. Thanks very much. On the motion, I need discussion, Larry.
No, just.
Great. Discussion, George?
No.
Great. A discussion, Leslie?
No.
Discussion, Woody?
None.
Discussion, Mary?
Yep.
All right, on the motion, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you, George. How do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary. How do you feel?
Yes.
Beautiful, and the chair is in favor as well. That being the case, I would ask for a motion to close this public hearing.
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Thank you, Woody, for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Larry, for the second. On the motion, I use discussion, Larry?
No.
Discussion, George?
No.
Discussion, Leslie?
No.
Discussion, Woody?
No.
A discussion, Mary?
No.
Great. On the motion, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Great. And the chair is also in favor. Thank you very much. TJ, I think I think we're finally to the finish line.
Great. Thank you all for your help.
Thank you, and we appreciate your patience through this process. All right, I'm turning back to our agenda. Let's see, we've done our liaison reports, we've many minute meeting minutes are still in production.
Yes, and I do have one thing that I wanted to add to my planning director's report. I'm sorry, I forgot earlier.
At nine thirty at night?
No, I know, I'm so sorry. And it's just a follow up on the email that I sent earlier about the public meetings that are going to be held in conjunction with our municipal vulnerability action grant on the fiscal and economic impact of sea level rise on Plum Island.
Yes.
So I just wanted to make sure everybody got that and, you know, check check out the website and come to the meetings if you have an opportunity.
And then there were two meetings over the meeting dates again?
So there are two meetings. The first one is next week on Monday, May twenty-fourth from five thirty to seven. And the second one is on Thursday, June third, from six thirty to eight.
Great, beautiful. I see a hand up. Jack, would you like to say something to the board?
Even Peter, even Martha, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you? And I hope it's something nice.
Yeah, of course, hey, but always, my friend. The agenda tonight mentioned eight forty-five in regards to the sixty-six Parish Road Open Space project, and I was wondering, more than a few people are still on board here because they were on for that update, and I was wondering if you could repeat it. I know it was done earlier in the meeting, but if it could just be repeated for those who hung around, I think we'd be greatly appreciative of that, Peter.
Sure thing. Appreciate that. Yes, we did. We did move it ahead, folks, because we had time in the beginning part of our meeting, Martha gave a report, so she can give a summary report, Martha, if you wouldn't mind.
So just again, this is a project that has been in the permitting process for a very long time. It was languishing for a long time. It received approval in November of twenty eighteen, and it wasn't clear even at that point whether it was going to go forward, but the project, the permitted project in the property has been purchased by a developer, John Colin Tony, who is ready to move this project forward. There was a preconstruction meeting organized by the Georgetown Planner, John Cashel, on May sixth, which Leslie attended and Jack attended as well to look both at the site and at the culvert. The planning, the Board of Selectmen, or now the Select Board did well, the the previous developer went before the Select Board back in twenty sixteen to request permission to rebuild the culvert, which is on Larkin Road. And an agreement was reached at that point that the developer would rebuild that culvert and the town would would pave it. There were a number of issues that came up during during the preconstruction meeting that were noted, including the fact that the water main is is shown on the plans to go underneath Larkin Road, which was paved a year ago. We have a moratorium of five years for cutting into the road. And there's going to be other other coordination with the town that needs to be done in terms of easements. The Conservation Commission did issue an order of conditions with an extension for construction or the rebuilding of the culvert. But I'm following up currently with the Conservation Commission, our Highway Director, Town Administrator, Town Council, to, you know, basically make sure that everything is in place on our side that needs to be done. We have been advised that no subdivision application needed to be submitted to the town because all of the development, including the new road, is in Georgetown, but its only access is from Larkin Road. And at the preconstruction conference, I was told by the app by the developer that even after the the bridge is rebuilt, he's still intending to have all construction traffic come down Larkin Road. So, you know, there will be some some construction impact on the road as well as traffic, and all of these are things that need to be sorted out. And and Jack has sent a number of emails, and all of those questions that he has sent are ones that I'm I'm addressing, or, you know, looking to others in town to address.
So just for clarification, this is not before the planning board, correct, Martha?
That is correct, and I'm
Right, yeah.
This is really more for information because people are now becoming aware of it and asking questions.
Yeah, I think it's important for people to understand that Newbury Planning Board is not officially involved in this project.
Right, and can you guide us, Martha? You see that the hands are coming up. As it's not in the purview of the planning board, I think it's necessary to give us guidance as to what authority we should be pursuing to make sure the interests of Larkin Road are served for all.
Right, and that's exactly what I'm trying to find out and and sort out in terms of the agreement that was reached. What else needs to be done? What the town's authority is on this? So I can't answer any of those questions right now, but I'm I'm talking to the people who who can.
So to answer the question, Jack, it's a work in progress, and Martha is trying to get her hands kind of wrapped around it. And unfortunately, we weren't involved in in the process, but so unfortunately, we're not, we're not being proactive, we're being unfortunately reactive, which is a situation that we're in. However, we do have a very good steward to help us through that process, and I have the faith and support that Martha will be doing that.
As as do I, Peter, entirely, and Martha, I continue to look forward to our dialogue on the matters at hand, and feel free, as always, to reach out.
Martha, can I ask a quick question? This is Justin Laundergin, also on Larkin Road.
Sure, go ahead, Justin.
Thirty-eight Larkin Road, everyone's asking for addresses. So every, pretty much every resident of Larkin Road is on this call right now. I I heard that this isn't the planning board's jurisdiction. But Martha, it sounds like Jack knows you and you know, Jack, I can only imagine. But I would like to understand how can the residents of Larkin Road know you're going to follow up with someone? What what? How can we follow up with you to figure out who to talk to? Because we have a number of people that are very concerned about this project, don't see the upside for Newbury at all.
Right, and you know, unfortunately, since it wasn't a subdivision application that could come before us. There, you know, there wasn't much input that we could have. What I would suggest, I think, is if you do have concerns, email them to me. Jack has already emailed me a number of questions, and I've got a list going. And I'm hoping to have a meeting next week with the relevant people here to discuss it and get some guidance on some of these things. So, you know, I'm welcome, I'm happy to feed field any questions that you you may have.
Martha, is, sorry, this is Catherine, Justin's wife. Is there, is the bridge in in Newbury? Or a bridge in, I feel, in Georgetown?
There's a very small portion of it that it's that's in Georgetown. The majority of it is in Newbury. And it's a bridge, actually, a number of years ago. I don't know if any of you were involved at that point, but our former select person, Chuck Bear, was very interested in in trying to get the bridge rebuilt at that time. And for whatever reason, it didn't didn't get any traction. I think there were some other higher priorities, like getting the Main Street Bridge rebuilt. So he was he was actively pursuing that, and then, you know, the developer for the sixty-six Parish Road came before the Select Board and offered to rebuild it, and so that was the agreement that was reached.
Martha, may I ask a question, please? Does it make sense if I were on Larkin Road, I would be very concerned about this project, as I have been, because I live very close in Newbury? Is there a source of information currently? Because you can't be it, because you're not, we're not really officially involved in this.
Right, I mean.
As a planning one.
Right, I would say.
Talk to, or get in Georgetown.
Right, I mean, I think the best source of information right now really would be the Georgetown Town Planner, John Cashel, in terms of of the, you know, construction process, process, the schedule, and so on and so forth.
Right, right.
I'm trying to do sort out, you know, what what you know, what the interface is between Georgetown and and Newbury on this, and get our our role.
For their purposes, they need to directly speak with the town planner in Georgetown, because your your information is coming secondhand right now, and until you know more, well, I can't give these guys what they're, what I feel they need. Is that true?
Yeah, I mean, it really depends on the nature of their questions, but any any questions related to the construction schedule and all that, really, John Cashel could answer much better than I can. I'm I'm getting that information from him, so.
But.
It's secondhand. It's secondhand.
I I understand this might not be the the planning board's jurisdiction or whatever we want to call it, but correct me if I'm wrong, Georgetown wants to develop property to fund Georgetown tax tax revenues, right? Which does not benefit the town of Newbury, who owns most of the bridge. You're asking us, Newbury residents, to go speak to the Georgetown Planner, who doesn't, as far as I understand, represent Newbury residents' interests. So what you're really telling us is to go go ask questions, not go affect change. On this call to learn more, we're on this call because we want to affect change.
Right.
Change with.
Right, and so. So that's what I was trying to say before. I think what Mary was saying is if you're looking for general information about the project, John Cashel would be the person. If you have concerns, questions about, you know, Newbury, the impact on Newbury, address them, please address them to me.
Okay.
Martha, um, yeah, just step in here for a second. I I think it's important to note that the Newbury Planning Board would very much like to be involved in this development. Is that correct, Martha? And we're trying to find an avenue to do so?
Um, you know, I don't know really that the planning board is the appropriate body at this point. There's no permitting to be done. You know, there are questions, there are questions about, you know, the water main, the impact on, you know, on Larkin Road of the construction itself. There are two curb cuts that are required. Presumably, there are easements that need to be put in place. You know, questions about the reconstruction of the bridge
Right.
itself.
So I think it's fair to say that this is an unusual situation, and it's one that we're going to have to kind of negotiate through. So concerns that you have, please do articulate them to Martha, and we'll we'll have to try to field them and try to be proactive at this time to address the concerns as the best that we can as a as an entity that's kind of not involved in the decision-making process, but we can advocate and hopefully address concerns. It's 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 an unusual awkward situation to be placed in.
Okay, sorry, final question, not to keep this party going. I know it's who in Newbury, it sounds like you guys are not making decision. Who is the decision maker in Newbury? Is it still the answer? We don't know? Because I'm really confused on that, and I don't understand how we don't know.
I think ultimately it it could be various entities, the Select Board, Highway. So, you know, I I can't give you a definitive answer right now, but, you know, I think the Select Board is has kind of the the ultimate authority for things like the town roads and stuff like that. So again, I will know much better, probably by the middle of next week.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. We we really do understand that you're very concerned about this, and we are as well. More official role, I think I would.
Yeah, you know, and and part of, you know, part of the part of the issue is that we had been given the impression that the project really was going to die because the the former developer didn't have the the means to move it forward. So it's now somebody else has bought it and it's ready to go. So you know, it's all kind of new to us as well. But we're we're working to sort it out.
Are there any regulations in place when you have a safety issue, like all of the people on this call from the Georgetown side and the and the Byfield side that walk their dogs and ride their bikes with their kids, like? walk their dogs and ride their bikes with their kids, like you can barely fit two cars on this street? Are there any regulations that say we would introduce a sidewalk or some speed bumps or some safety measures?
I don't think we should be involved in this discussion right now, because we don't have the answers these guys need.
It's, yeah, I I think what would be helpful at this time is to to try to memorialize these concerns and these questions in the form of emails and letters to Martha, so that she can assimilate them. And if necessary, if it is directed towards the Select Board, for them to then be involved, if that is where it needs to go. So articulate the concerns so that that we can then direct where they need to go, because that that's what needs to happen. And so that we don't get frustrated, and we don't get angered about it. We just try to do it in a constructive manner. So I think that's probably the best thing that we could suggest this evening to help this process go along, because it is a work in progress. And Martha, hopefully you'll have more information by mid next week from what she has said.
Right. And I don't want to be giving out any incorrect information either.
Right.
preliminary.
Okay, thanks.
You know, what I would suggest is if you, my email address is planningboard, all one word, at townofnewberry.org. And if you can get me emails with any of your concerns or questions by, say, the end of the day on Friday. You know, then I can kind of compile them into the other questions that I've that I have, and I'm trying to get sorted out.
That's great, Martha. Thank you very much.
Yep, will do. Thanks.
Guys, I'm concerned too, don't worry.
So I know there are hands up. Is there anyone that wants to say anything that would supplement our discussion thus far?
Can I just say one thing? I'm actually a resident of Georgetown on Parish Road, but I'm two houses down from the actual bridge.
Would you be Cheryl Floyd?
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Cheryl Floyd. Yeah, sorry.
And what's your address, please?
Twenty-six Parish Road in Georgetown. So I'm two houses away from the actual bridge. And I think this should be a concern of the the Newbury residents as well, which is why I'm only bringing it up now in case these emails don't get to Martha. When I went to the meeting in two thousand and sixteen, and it was said that the the contractor was going to pay to rebuild the bridge, so forth and so on. One of my concerns, and it was addressed at this meeting, was the wildlife. And we were told at that point that, and again, if this is a Newbury Bridge, then I'm assuming the water underneath that bridge belongs to Newbury. We were told at that point that the contractor would be responsible to move any, you know, fish, turtles, any kind of water life that was in there, they'd have to drain the water, move all all of those living creatures to another part of the river, and then once it was complete, move them back. And I said I would, you know, I would go down there myself and and keep my eye on it like a hawk to make sure that was done the way it's supposed to be done. And I think that should be a concern of everybody's, in addition to everything else that's been said on the call tonight.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, very helpful. Gabe, Gabrielle?
You'll need. Hi, yeah, I just, I just.
So.
Oh, am I unmuted now?
Name and address for Martha. Yes, you're unmuted.
I'm I'm Gabrielle Connelly. I'm on the Georgetown side, twenty-three Parish Road. I also was here to hear more about the bridge and potentially the opening of the street. I, my son is autistic and disabled, so rightly, I'm extremely concerned if this bridge opens and the traffic coming through for someone like him. You know, with the danger of eloping, where we live right now, being quiet, I'm very concerned about the traffic that would be coming through. So where do we, like, should we email Martha with our concerns to try and find more information on this?
I would think, and I don't want to direct the topic, we can come along as a as a Georgetown resident. Since this is a Georgetown project, I would I would encourage you to articulate your concerns to that, to your town, because they would listen to you as a resident. Carry, I think, more weight. Would that be accurate, Martha?
I would say, I mean, the the OSRD decision does require that the bridge be completed before the first occupancy permit is issued. So so that's been tied to that. So in that sense, I would recommend talking with John Cashel again about that, because it's really related to the planning boards, the Georgetown Planning Board's decision on this project. You know, I can certainly bring it up as as one of the concerns here, but because it's tied to by Georgetown, okay, that's really the appropriate place to voice it.
Okay, just trying to make sure that we're, you know, that we're being heard. We're like so interconnected, tough to know where we're supposed to be directing our energy between the two places.
That is directly connected. The bridge reconstruction is directly connected to Georgetown's approval of this project.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Appreciate you being. Cheryl, you said? Okay. Julie?
Hi, I actually live next door to Cheryl.
So Julie, just first name, last name, and street, please.
Julie Bernato, twenty-eight Parish Road. I'm actually the last house on before the bridge. I have a six-year-old and a three-year-old, and this street is such a mad race, because because people don't realize that it's a dead end. And now I'm concerned that it's going to be cut through. So I feel like it's been going on for ten years now. We should just keep it the way it is. I know it's a Byfield Bridge, but it's a concern for me.
Julie, did you get cut off, or did you stop?
I stopped.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I wanted to make sure that I didn't miss anything. In valid concern, very valid concern, Martha's taking notes. And so, again, please articulate your your concerns and send them to her so that she has documentation in an email file that will be helpful for her conversations. Thank you. Okay. Hopefully, that tied the the other end of the the OSID for sixty-six Parish Road. Martha, do we have anything else on our agenda for this evening?
Um, no, I don't think so. I'll just take one quick look. I think we're, I think we've covered everything.
Okay.
Martha has to read all the minutes, though, for approval.
Um, I'm not sure that we're ready for minutes. Are we, Martha?
I'm not kidding. I'm not kidding.
That's in process. If you want to, Brad, that would probably take a whole night.
So I think we're going to visit those.
To my point.
Right. The one, the one for January twenty-six alone is fifteen pages long, so.
Oh, hey, let's do it.
Yeah, and that's all Emily's good work.
What are you saying, right? What are you?
All right. That being the the case, kids, I would entertain a motion to adjourn for this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
I think you, Leslie, you have a second to the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Larry, and Woody, at the same time. There was a unanimous second, discussion of the motion, Larry.
You know.
No, good. Discussion of the motion, Leslie. Discussion, Woody. No, discussion, Mary.
No.
On the motion, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Oh, beautiful. And Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
Wonderful. Thank you. And Mary?
Yes, and good night. Thank you, Pete, and thank you, Martha, as always. You guys are awesome.
Thank you, everyone, tonight, for all your support and participation, and and everyone have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night now.
All the way as well.
Night, guys.
Thank you. Good night.